We're going to defer the school committee goals discussion to our November ninth meeting. We're going to defer the transportation and safety, traffic safety subcommittee report to the November ninth meeting. We're going to add a policy subcommittee. And we're going to defer the deployment of security personnel discussion in executive session to our November ninth meeting. And with those modifications, we'll move forward. More is not here yet, but we do have someone from MFE for Citizen Speak Denise Quely and...
Greg Gordon.
Greg Gordon.
Put your hat on.
I'm Greg Gordon from the Milton Foundation for Education.
And I'm Denise Quely from the Milton Foundation for Education.
And we are here to talk about Monster Dash, which is this Sunday at Cunningham Hall in Cunningham Park. For those who don't know about Monster Dash, it's an annual community event. We have a 5K fun run where we encourage participants to run in costumes, fun costumes. We also have a kids' fun run activity where children from age birth to ten can participate in a variety of activities. They can participate in a fun run where they chase a good spirited dad in town who dresses up as Mario, and they chase him around Cunningham Field and win prizes. They can participate and enjoy bouncy houses, face painting, balloons, tattoos. And Monster Dash, the spirit of Monster Dash is that the Milton Foundation for Education, we are raising funds for science enrichment at all four Milton elementary schools. This is our eighteenth annual event in memory of Sam Caccillo, a young Milton school boy who tragically died in a playground accident years ago. So the event is in his honor, in his memory. Sam loved science, he truly cherished and loved science, so Monster Dash is raising funds for science enrichment in all four Milton elementary schools. So, I am proud to say that our participation, our preregistrations are through the roof this year, so we're expecting a great event in terms of numbers and participation and smiles and costumes. Specifics about the event, it's this Sunday, the thirtieth, at Cunningham Hall, Cunningham Park. Registration opens at nine AM. The fun begins at nine. Kids' activities and DJ excitement starts at nine, goes through ten, where more activities join in. The big costumed fun run with that good natured spirited dad dressed as Mario takes place at ten thirty. And the official 5K race where all the runners in town show their stuff and strut their stuff is at eleven AM. We will have awards and give out prizes for best costumes, best male and female costumes, best family costume, best kids' costumes. We will have bouncies, we will have an owl from the Trailside Museum, we will have stomp rockets and science experiments from Bernadette Butler and Science from Scientists and a number of other exciting events and initiatives on the day.
Absolutely. It's, can't wait, can't wait. Of course, the MFE is honored to honor Sam's memory in the Caccillo family. It's his eighteenth anniversary of the Monster Dash. And as a precursor to the Monster Dash, we had in our contest, some of you may have participated, some of your children may have participated, we're very excited. We had a record two hundred and seventy-eight entries this year from children across the Milton public school system, as well as some of the private schools in town. Our winner was chosen among the two hundred and seventy-eight and happens to be a kindergarten student at Calicotta Elementary School. His name is Phineas Buchanan, and he has the honor of not only having his artwork featured on a Monster Dash t-shirt, this is a prior one, which I did bring many for the board members, if you'd like to take one on the way out, you're welcome to some prior t-shirts. But his artwork will be featured on the t-shirt, and he will also officially start the race. So we're very excited about that, and he is as well. So, so that was exciting. We also just wanted to mention where the money goes, because I think you're very interested in that. So, over the past several years, we've been blessed to have Bernadette Butler at the helm organizing elementary science, and the money has been very well spent across the district, all four elementary schools, from kindergarten to fifth grade. We've had discovery ramps, we've had wind tunnels in first grade, second grade weather books, we've had aqua farms, Miracle-Gro aerogardens. If you have a third grader, perhaps you heard about the owl talks that we've had, dissecting the owl pellets, and then we have the owls come in. In fourth grade, we've had learning kits, we've had snap circuit sound. I know, I'm sure Dr. Spalding's getting very excited to hear all these wonderful science things that we have in preparing her elementary, you know, the elementary children for her middle school. In the fifth grade, perhaps you've heard about Science from Scientists, which we're very proud of, we introduced a few years ago. Milton Foundation for Education is partially funded in that program, it's doing very well, it's getting rave reviews, and every time I see a fifth grader, I ask them about Science from Scientists, and their face lights up, and I hope you ask them as well. We also funded the site license for the weather bug, which is used across all schools. I believe it started in Glover, but we provided a site license for all the schools, and we also provided weather books to supplement that. So we really do our best, working very closely with the Milton public schools as always, to provide these initiatives that enrich our children's lives. So we're really excited about this year's Sam's Fund to help finance other things like that.
Right. And this is first and foremost, a fundraising event. We're raising funds for science enrichment for the elementary schools. The cost is twenty-five dollars for the 5K, whether you're an adult or a child, and everyone, the first five hundred preregistered runners for the 5K get a phenomenally awesome updated this year's winning t-shirt. The cost for the kids' fun run is seven dollars. And keeping in mind, it's a fundraising event, we'd like to acknowledge our sponsors for this year's event. Our gargoyle sponsors, which contributed and supported the event at the level of twenty-five hundred dollars and above, Blue Hills Bank and Milton Chiropractic Bay State Physical Therapy, we'd like to thank and acknowledge them. Our vampire sponsors at one thousand dollars and above, the Mark A. Susie Scholarship Fund, Elliot Physical Therapy, Beth Israel Milton Hospital, and Planet Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram, we'd like to acknowledge and thank them. Our goblin sponsors at five hundred dollars of support and above, Brain Tree Plumbing and Heating, Brain Tree Pediatric Dentistry, Fruit Center Marketplace, Kaderis Bluestein, Eagle Farms, Casner and Edwards, and Kenealy Meats, like to acknowledge and thank them. Our bat sponsors at two hundred and fifty dollars and above, the Campbell School, Scholar and DiMarzio Orthodontics, I hope I'm saying that properly.
Very well done, actually.
Thank you very much. And William Rivas Real Estate. And our in-kind sponsors, which of course are always important, and we'd like to acknowledge them, Healthy Kitchen and Yogurt Bar, The Plate, Science from Scientists, Trailside Museum, Coffee Break Cafe, LLM Design, Marathon Sports, the Milton Public Schools, the Milton Police Department, Trader Joe's, The Proper Exposure, Bob Marata, Pat's Pizza, Abbey Park, and Novara. So, we'd like to thank our sponsors. The registration is open online until this Friday at noon. We encourage everyone to sign up early. We encourage you to come to Cunningham Park Saturday to pick up your bibs early, because Sunday can be hectic. We want everyone to arrive with a smile and start the race with a smile, and we hope to see you there.
And just lastly, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to you for your volunteerism and your work within the Milton public schools. I also want to acknowledge, I'm the very proud co-president of the Milton Foundation for Education, have been for a few years, I've been on the board for a few years. And I just want to acknowledge the co-chairs this year that really have made this happen. Greg Gordon is one of them, he's also known as Mario, just so you know. Rachel Shewy is another, who's unbelievable, she's really helped out a ton this year, has in the past few years as well. And our own, and your own now, Margaret Everhard, who we thank very much for everything that she's done. I also want to thank Eileen Heller and Mercedes Harris, who helped with the t-shirt contest. We're very, very fortunate to have very active board members within the MFE, but also volunteers that help us, and we thank them very much from the bottom of our hearts. So we look forward to seeing you, hopefully. A lot of school committee members have been there in the past, and we encourage you to come again this year, dressed up preferably, but if you don't want to, that's fine too. You can wear this t-shirt. And we thank you very much for having us. Are there any questions at all? I don't know if that's appropriate.
I don't think there are any questions, but I, I would say, as often as we can, we're very fortunate to have you, and we treasure the relationship that we have with the Milton Foundation for Education. This is a great event, I've done it quite a few years, and I plan to be there on Sunday. I come early and walk the course, but that counts, I think.
It counts, absolutely.
So, thanks for everything that you do for the Milton public schools.
Thank you.
Our town is fortunate to have you.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it, we really appreciate all the support. Have a great meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you. And please take a t-shirt on the way out.
Superintendent Gormley.
Thank you Chairman Walker. We have a full agenda tonight, so first we'd like to invite to the table, the school committee has asked for early budget presentations from the site councils. We heard from Milton High School and Pierce Middle School at our last meeting, would the Cunningham Elementary School Site Council join us at the table for your FY eighteen budget presentation? Welcome. Ms. Hyde and Principal Redden, welcome.
Good evening, ladies. We're going to be joined by one parent on the Site Council as well, she comes straight up here. She'll be a familiar face to me of you. All right. So, it's great working with the Site Council again. We have the familiar faces from the last two years, and I'm happy to say that we also have new parents joining our Site Council this year. They're going to start with us, starting in November. The teachers that you see up there are going to stay on board, including Mrs. Hyde, who's new to us this year, and who came willingly, I asked her one time, and she was very happy to come as long as we kept the meetings on Wednesdays. And we have four new parents that are also going to be joining us, so they're really excited. Of course, I extended the welcome for the parents already on the Site Council to continue coming to our meetings and participating, because we've done such great work together. I want to start by giving a lot of information, you already know, a quick school profile. When I started five years ago, there were only three hundred and ninety students at the Cunningham School. As you can see now, we have five hundred and nine students. I'm very excited, we have twenty-three classrooms, we have eighty staff members, many of them shared. We have two substantially separate programs, but I'm very excited to talk about the ICLP program, which we sort of piloted last year, we didn't really give it a name, but it was our formerly, formerly our LEAP One program. We modified it and changed it so that the students are spending nine, almost ninety percent of their time in the general classroom with their grade level peers, and the supports are in the accommodations that are provided for the students inside of the classroom. They still, of course, have pull-out supports there, and they utilize the LEAP Two classroom, but we're hoping, because of all the success we've had last year and the year before with providing the needs to students in the general classroom, we've actually moved some students out of the program into the general classroom with supports, but obviously, that's the goal. We want to make sure that they're not, they don't need to be, if they can get the supports in the generated classroom, that's where we want them to be. So, we're very excited that we were approved for that program, and it was definitely going off into a success this year. We have eighty-seven students receiving specialized education services, about seventy-six of them are academic services, and eighty-seven overall. We have active groups, we have our Site Council, our cultural committee, our diversity committee, our grade level facilitators, and we have the professional development teams, they work with professional development teams. As you know, these groups, we meet monthly, but a lot of these groups are involved in all the presentations and assemblies that we do, and they're a big help in the next presentation that we'll do in May for you guys. Our school improvement goals. Number one, improving science. We recognize science needs to be promoted and celebrated as much as possible. I actually remember one time, one of my student leaders was presenting to you, and actually said, one thing she remembered about Dr. Spalding was how much she loved science. And she only had Dr. Spalding in first in kindergarten, so I was wondering, I hope that didn't sort of go away when I joined, and like, I want to make sure I'm emphasizing science, hopefully as much as Dr. Spalding did, because that was a great thing to remember about a principal you only have for two years, and I want to make sure that this emphasis is on science again and continues. Increased academic achievement and growth for all students. We want to work to provide extra support and opportunities and quality enrichment activities for students that are meeting expectations, and make sure that all students are being pushed in the classroom and in the extended programs. And provide a safe and supportive learning environment. Nothing happens with students academically if they don't feel safe in the school, in the learning environment, to take risks in the classroom. We definitely want to acknowledge the things that we already have in place over the past three years. We've identified students receiving support that is appropriate to where they actually are struggling in reading. So, the reading specialists have been instrumental to all the success, a lot of the success that we've had. Not only do they provide services and support to students that are struggling in reading, they do those right in the classroom, so their practices are observed, they're observed by other students, it carries over when they're not there, they get to use those skills and strategies, but their peers, when the reading teacher's not there. And we've actually increased the amount of support, we can extend it all with the fourth grade. Even this year, we have some students receiving some reading support in fifth grade, which is great, great news. So we've been able to adjust the schedule to make sure those services take place. The PD, target of professional development and PD opportunities. I'm not going to read all these bullets to you, but I just want to speak to one science PD that took place actually this year, and the teacher actually being very excited and saying that the lesson that the teachers did was actually the lesson that they were actually covering in class, and actually came and got me out of my office so she can see, so I could see some of the things that she took from the PD with the teachers and using with our classroom, and she called it the best science lesson she ever taught. Now, I know you've heard so many positive things about the FOS curriculum, and I also think it's a very good program, especially when teachers used to admit they weren't sort of as knowledgeable in science as they would like to be, but it's definitely been a very good support for the teachers, and the PD has always been well received. And again, this teacher's excitement about the PD and then the lesson was very authentic, and I just wanted to share that one piece with you. Another big one was the common planning time. Obviously, it's great that the students have extra time in gym, music and art, but the benefit is, we have more time with teachers, and teachers have more time with one another to sort of plan. We have, there's a lot of expectations and a lot of new things that they're doing this year and over the past three years, and we want to make sure that they feel supported by each other, they feel supported by administration, and that takes time, and we know, with the increased time, have that time, so I appreciate that as well. These are more of our school-wide things that we do to support the whole child. Can we come back to this slide? I would hate to take away Ms. Graham's presentation, so hopefully she comes in. Now we get into our asks. Again, thank you for all the things that we've received so far. Our first staffing need is our math specialist. As I mentioned, we've had so much success with the reading specialist. We want to sort of mirror the supports that we can provide for students in the reading with the math. So with documented success of students having additional support in reading, an additional specialist will allow me to schedule academic supports for struggling students during the school day and during instructional lessons. So again, we're not talking about pull-out, we're not talking about removing students from the class, we want to make sure the students are in the class, receiving the supports at their level, and also, with the benefit of an extra teacher, we can also easily push students who are meeting expectations, and make sure we're providing extra opportunities for them to continue to push their thinking and problem-solving skills. I didn't...
No, no question.
I didn't want to let our Site Council meeting end without bringing up the assistant principal, because I think it's a very, very important thing to ask for, but just hearing the feedback from the group and why, like, they came up with reasons I didn't think of, so I just want to share those. So the assistant principal, when we're talking about an administrator for five hundred and nine students, as you know, we're in one complex, so there's really twelve hundred students entering that complex every day, and we have two administrators, two principals there, and a lot of times, things come up, and we have to pull either a coordinator, or we have to pull another teacher and give them some, I'll call them administrative duties, and we definitely want to be respectful of what the coordinators do, and make sure that they're in the classroom. So when I talk about coordinators, for myself, I'm talking about Mrs. Gale and Ms. Butler, and make sure that we're not pulling them away from the supports that's supposed to be providing for teachers in the classroom and meeting with teachers during the common planning time, because they're doing administrative duties that do come up when you have twelve hundred students in one building. So, an ask would be to have an assistant principal to support me and Mrs. Concanon with those administrative duties, because we have such a big student body. Science specialists, this actually came up because of Mrs. Hyde, but it was a great discussion that we had in Site Council. We see so much success with the fifth grade Science from Scientists, with just strong science content, people coming into the classroom, teaching science, and in year three, they look forward to it, it's so much more organized, and the teachers and everyone, they're benefiting from the scientists that come into the classroom. This year, we voted on, we approved, I hope it doesn't get disapproved now, on the dissection for the first time, so they're going to be dissecting frogs for the first time, and that was another exciting thing, it's unanimous for our Site Council. So, again, those opportunities like that wouldn't be provided without Science from Time. So it actually came up, wouldn't be great to have this kind of a program in fourth grade, and fortunately Bernadette Butler was at that meeting and said, it doesn't go into fourth grade. So, but we want to mirror some of those, what it looks like through a science specialist, so that's why I'm asking for a science specialist to provide it. The ask would be at least for third to fourth grade, but obviously, if the opportunity presents itself where I can have it for other grades, that would be appreciated, and of course, A technology coordinator, this person would necessarily need to be housed at the Cunningham Site, but as you know, we have a lot of devices, iPads, Kindles, Chromebooks, where people have accounts, or students have accounts, and then we have accounts by teachers who use certain programs and apps to help support the teaching that they're doing, and help support the, put students on individual programs at their levels, and a lot of these accounts need to be managed. Teachers move grade levels, especially at the Cunningham School, and we want to make sure that there's a sort of a universal way to sort of track and keep these accounts updated, so that we don't have to reset the devices every time and lose programs that would be beneficial. And we don't want teachers using their own credit cards, we want to make sure we have a plan in place. The PTO's been very supportive, and they buy gift cards, and try to take the money piece of it out, so it's just a management piece that I'm looking for as far as supporting teachers to sort of, we definitely scratched the surface on what a lot of these devices can do, and these programs can do, these platforms can do, but we want to make sure we can get even deeper and really support students, and do it authentically, and make sure we're maximizing what the capabilities of what these devices can do. So that's what the technology coordinator position. An additional adjustment counselor, so elementary years set the tone for developing children's knowledge and self-regulation skills and confidence and attitude. School councils are responsible for students who require services on IEPs and 504 plans, but are also responsible for supporting the well-being of all students. Effective school counseling programs support students through teaching social skills, confidence building, and problem-solving at a school-wide level by providing training for school staff, teaching classroom lessons, and being available during unstructured time in recess. There's a recommendation from the American School of Counselors for a counselor for every two hundred and fifty students. I recognize that it's from the American Foundation of School Counselors Association, but I think it's telling that providing a staff member that can support students that are not just on IEPs or 504s, and having someone available to support the whole school, I think it's telling that that person, the benefits of that is students perform better academically and socially. And currently, we have a great new adjustment counselor who is definitely stressed in, but because she understands the importance of being out at recess, following through on the new second curriculum, and following through on the things that we're promoting at the school, she does use her own time to make sure she's out at recess, and make sure she's supporting students beyond just the time she has to commit to students who are on 504s and IEPs. Before I get into textbooks, materials, and supplies, I do have to mention this, it wasn't a bullet point up here, another, which would have been the top of my group's ask, but it's definitely very important, I just want to put it out there, present it, that movement of the teachers, year to year, from grade to grade, due to single strands and going from four to three, is definitely something that they wanted me to share, that that definitely happened. So, the investment that teachers put into the grade level, and as a result, they have to move from grade to grade. So when you have a three or a single strand French going up, and the movement of those teachers, it does have an impact, and it's something that would have been number one on their priority list, and they were, they definitely wanted me to share, so I would feel I'm doing a disservice if I didn't share that. That's not a budget item, there's nothing you can pay, the school is built the way it is, we have so many students, but I just wanted to share that with you.
So, for the viewing public, Principal Redden always advocates to take the extra class, because the feeling of, if I might, the Cunningham community is they want to have two strands in both French immersion and English. And so he's a vocal advocate. Again, Tucker and Cunningham were built to be three strands at a grade level, but whenever there is an extra class, they, the community wants two strands at each grade level.
Speaking to the first point, the science materials for kindergarten and first grade. Personally, my science instruction has changed dramatically over the last three years with the implementation of FOS in grades two to five, because it's built students' science knowledge and skills through hands-on learning, as well as reading and writing. Students are coming to upper grades with more enthusiasm for science, and more science knowledge, and more science skills. And perhaps my favorite sound as a teacher is that, oh, that I get it, something becomes crystal clear, and when we're doing those science lessons, I hear that very often. So, I, I think it's because the program allows students to build their skills through that hands-on experience, and I want that same successful experience for my colleagues in kindergarten and first grade, and we're hoping to move FOS into those younger grades, so that there's some continuity with the science program, K to five. So that's that first point. As for materials to support literacy, I know we have a leadership team discussing appropriate phonics materials in the lower grades, because as of now, we're using a phonics program... phonics materials in the lower grades, because as of now, we're using a phonics program that's a piece of a larger curriculum that we no longer use, so some of those phonics lessons don't seem very cohesive, they're a little disjointed, so we're in need of effective phonics materials for the younger, the younger grades. And as for adding nonfiction books to our libraries, there is not a teacher I know that would not jump at the chance to expand our classroom libraries. We encourage kids to read, 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 and they do so voraciously. I have a class full of readers this year, and I want to make sure that we're never lacking in books for those kids, at all genres and all levels. Nonfiction in particular is an area of need, and we need to be able to supply readers at any age and any level with books that are interesting, very high interest, but also accessible to many different levels. Simply, the more books we have, the more kids are going to read, the more they read, the more they're going to learn. And then, I'm going to just jump over your point. Okay, so I'm going to jump over Goal Book and let Mr. Redden speak to that. And the technology piece, like everything, technology ages out, and we use those smartboards daily, and we are in need of at least three new ones. Additionally, the Chromebooks purchased four years ago need to be replaced. I'm lucky enough to have easy access to a Chromebook cart, which has computers for every single one of my students. I think that replacing, we're hoping that replacing about 50 of the Acer Chromebooks that are a little older will make that a reality for more teachers, so that they can all have access to Chromebooks, which has enhanced my instruction.
Just add a little bit to that, as you know, before we became a Google district, someone had to sort of pilot the platform and see if it would be something we wanted to buy into, and we did that five years ago. The Chromebooks, Mrs. Heidberg, she's referring to, were about five years old. So these are Chromebooks that we received through Donors Choose, projects, and PTO. Once the MFE started purchasing those Chromebooks, that HP Chromebooks, those are still in good condition. We're talking about a generation before that. And Goal Book, this actually came up from, we, last year, we had the opportunity to pilot Goal Book. We had one special education teacher who did it in the previous district and suggested it when we were talking about using common language, being consistent with the supports that we're providing for students, and being consistent when we're talking about what's effective and what's working when we're supporting students in the classroom, and having sort of like a library of, a place we can go to, to find, they have lessons, they have ideas, they have supports that can be provided for the general teacher, but most, more specifically, based on the objectives that are written for the student, they have things that, they have opportunities or lessons for the students to engage in when they're meeting with either the teacher or the special ed teacher or the classroom teacher. So this is a platform that is used by many schools in Boston, it just happens that one of our special ed teachers was familiar with it, and we piloted it last year in May. They only give you the accounts for 30 days, and the teachers on their own used it and thought it was a great benefit. It wasn't a huge ask compared to the other things, there should be 50,000 next to the technology bullet, so it wasn't a huge ask, and I've already sort of felt that for such a high need, we had 87 students receiving special ed services, and we have four teachers working with students in the inclusive setting, they bought into the inclusive setting, they understand the benefits of providing services for students, we want to support them as much as we can, so I feel like this platform will support all the way from the special education chair all the way down, making sure that we're speaking consistently, we're helping students meet their goals, and regardless of what special education teachers are providing services to the student, everyone's talking the same language. So I think Goal Book would be a great platform to have for the whole year. So ultimately, what will successfully fly? High needs subgroups, achievement gap will begin to close. I wrote this as if I did my data presentation already, so if you have questions about the data points I'm highlighting, I'll highlight that in the next presentation. Science scores in grade five will continue to rise, grade three students will comfortably access both content and technology in the classroom. And I know she prepared very well for this presentation, so I don't want to, can we go back to the slide, please?
Sorry. Am I on?
This is not important.
I thought 7:30 was...
Ms. Graham, do you want to introduce Ms. Graham?
Yep, so this is Ms. Frank Graham, she's been on our site council for two years now, and she helped prepare this presentation, so I want to make sure she has the opportunity to share.
I was going to talk about the whole child a little bit.
So Ms. Graham, not only are you on, but what an entrance.
Yeah, I really thought, he was like, it won't be 7:30. So I apologize. I just want to say, as you know, there's so much more, I know you've gone over the test scores, there's so much more beyond that, as we all know. Comprehensive education addresses the arts, character, diversity, and community, and I want to say the anti-bullying curriculum has had a dramatic effect that, like, you can just see in the kids, they get it, and it's changed how they relate and how they treat people out in the world. It's really been effective. And our community events really help the kids feel like they're part of something. The Veterans Day celebration's coming up, and honoring those who serve us and bringing our communities, young and old, together is a living history lesson for them, it's been really a powerful thing. And the last thing I just want to mention, I know I'm supposed to be quick, I just have to put a plug in for RAD and MTA, and expanding them to the kindergarten and fifth grade has opened our students' eyes to the vital role of diversity and the arts in a true education. It's, it's, it's just really had a big impact. Again, these programs and the tireless work of parent volunteers and the PTO and school committee funding are essential in supporting our teachers' great work in educating the whole child.
So before Ms. Graham finishes, the last time you were here, you talked about the Cunningham Garden, do you want to share what happened this afternoon?
Yeah, so today Nick Daly was there to have a ribbon cutting with Mr. Redden and everyone who supported him, and it was just amazing. This kid, he's, it's just above and beyond, I think, Eagle Scout work. It's just, it's beautiful, he's an artist, he's a welder, he's not even through high school yet, and it's just, it's a great thing.
So this is summary where we want to sort of take, so with these asks, we definitely want to move the school forward, regardless of, we have tireless staff, we have a great family community supporting the school, always willing to come in, join our site council, evidenced by the new team that we're going to welcome in November, and sort of promote all the great things that happen at Cunningham. As you know, the Cunningham experience is one thing we look forward to preparing for you later in the year. Thank you.
Do we have questions?
You do, Ms. Gore.
Yep, thank you so much. I wanted to ask you, so I wanted to ask, I guess I wanted to ask you and Superintendent Gormley and maybe Machine can speak to this too, on, it's interesting, on the staffing needs, I think it's great the strides that we're making in science. Does anyone, the science specialists in general, does, do anybody have those? Like, is that, you know, I know I hear about math, you know, how much we need math and reading all the time, but due to the fact that science, because there are standards now and there are standardized tests that are being taken, is that a movement that, I mean, do some districts at least even have one that they rotate around in elementaries? I'm just wondering about that in general, that you know of.
Machine.
Well, some districts do have science specialists, because we, you know, there's an understanding that, that teachers at the elementary level may not be content specialists. So I think that, that Mr. Redden was really talking about sort of replicating the science from scientists program in many ways, and so, you know, in a, in an ideal world, we would love to have someone with that content knowledge come in and model for the teachers, which is what has happened in grade five. I would also like to add, however, that we have made a tremendous commitment to, to science instructional materials and professional development, and that is ongoing, and our teachers are becoming experts in science content, and I think that the science from scientists program brings a, something special in that we have scientists who come and model for students and teachers, and I think that that is what makes the difference. Mr. Redden might want to add, he might have additional ideas about what that science specialist would do, but it was my understanding that you were looking to replicate more of the, the concept of science from scientists.
Yes, as I mentioned, it actually came up genuinely from the success that we see in fifth grade, so it was more of replicating that in the fourth grade, especially, and if it led to the third grade, that'd be great, so it was more than just replicating the great experience and nothing. So the science scientists, they come in once every two weeks, I wasn't thinking to remove science from the teachers' plans.
And just one more question, for adjustment counselors, again, how many do we have at each elementary, or do we have to share one, or how, and then, yeah, you can speak to that.
So each elementary school, we have one adjustment counselor per school.
Per school you do, okay, all right, thank you.
And many of the, the time of those adjustment counselors might be written into the special education individual plans.
Yeah, I know, that's responsible, yeah.
Dr. Craig.
I have a couple of questions too, mine are about the text material supplies. The first thing, by the way, are these two lists ranked in order of need for you all, for the text material supplies and staffing needs? Did you, one through five, is that in order of a hierarchical order?
I would say because number four, the technology coordinator is at the school base, I would say the adjustment counselor would be more.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yes.
So under text material supplies, number one, did you have some sort of cost?
We did, but we had the district costs, so I think every school's asked for something similar around the science materials for K and one.
Okay.
And it was $5,000 per district, so you divide that.
And to Dr. Craig's point about these science materials, through the advancement budget, we've purchased these FOS kits, and I think it's important, if the MFE remain for the presentations, they'd tell you that their goal is to enhance the program in the middle and public schools, not to assume the responsibility of the taxpayer. So they worked with Bernadette Butler to enhance the science, they would never use the funding that they raised from this generous community to buy the FOS kits. So this, this absolutely, right, Principal Redden?
Yeah.
Is to extend the FOS kits that have been purchased in three, four, and five.
Okay.
And the success that we've seen in three, four, and five, and the teachers talking about the curriculum, and I can speak for my kindergarten teacher who's on my site council, who they would appreciate these materials very well.
Okay, and I have one more question. Under number three for the Goal Book, would this be a yearly cost of $5,000 for an online program, or would this be a one-time cost?
So it's, I think it's around $800 a year, an annual sustain, I think it's the initial, and this is for the number of accounts we receive.
Okay.
So this would take care of the students on IEPs, actually for two schools, more than likely college classes, we work so closely with them, but this, so this account, because they, mostly districts buy into this program, so this is the lower end of the cost, but this is still enough accounts for, I think, 200 students on the IEP.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bagley Jones.
Thank you very much for a great presentation. You can really see the care and excitement about the Cunningham School, so it's really wonderful to see. I wanted to go back to the adjustment counselor, I missed that. Did you say the adjustment counselor was, should be number four, or was number one in your prioritizing?
Sorry, the adjustment counselor is number four.
Okay, number four, okay. So you have one full-time now, and you're looking for a half-time in addition?
Yes.
So 1.5, okay. And I assume there isn't, but is there a way, if you haven't done it already, to collect data on what the adjustment counselor is actually doing, and what kinds of things do you see are more and more necessary?
So we actually, and again, I made this as if I already presented my data on presentation, I talked about a model that we did in fourth grade, due to some scores that we saw in fourth grade, we're replicating it, it's not the same model, but it's, it's with a third grade class, and it involves a lot of support from the adjustment counselor, just based on the need, and not because students are on IEPs or 504s, but because we felt that that would help the students behaviorally and academically, and the time commitment that she spends in there, along with the additional support from the reading teachers, I think has turned around that class, and I think has benefited, and I think that's more of what I'm talking about when I say the 1.5, so beyond sort of the required support that the teacher needs to provide to the students, but being able to be in the classrooms and sort of help support the teachers with the, either the second step program or the anti-bullying program, but also be on, sort of on the ground and sort of supporting in the classroom in that recess, lunch and recess, I think is extremely important.
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So outside of that kind of experiences that the person provides, which are wonderful, what is the data on how many individual kids that person is in contact with? Not now, I'm just saying, that's something as we think about adding?
Yeah, so we do have, we have the, we have the report, we can pull those and see how many students in that time that they, it's usually one times 30, or, and we can have that information.
It's just interesting to look at what you see and why you need more from that point of view.
Ms. Everhart.
Thank you for the presentation, just to comment on the garden gate, it really is quite a fabulous, I wish I could have been there today. Nick is an amusing kid, a great family, the Daligans are a wonderful family. The Goal Book, is that a district-wide effort, the, is that what it's called? Am I saying it right?
No, I meant, districts usually support Goal Books, so they're, they usually support all the students on that in the district, so I got the lower end of the cost, but even the lowest end covers probably all the students from two schools.
Okay, just wondering.
Thank you, that was a great presentation, really helpful.
Thank you very much. Next, we'd like to invite up the Glover Site Council, and I'm going to ask Principal McDavid to make introductions, would you bring all your site council up?
All of them. I don't know if we have enough chairs. So I, I promise I did not bribe them all to come here tonight, they, they came on their own willingly, but, sure, come on up, or in the front row, I don't know. So I want to introduce three extremely dedicated and amazing Glover teachers. Mrs. Maureen Flanagan is our fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Allison White is a third grade teacher, and Mrs. Lauren Vannicore is a new addition to the Glover staff in the second grade, and a little-known secret, I stole her from where I came. So...
Ms. McDavid, why don't the parents join you at the table, because the mics will be more available.
That'd be great, that'd be great. And in addition, I have wonderful parent representatives on our site council. This is Mrs. Patty Facy, Mr. Jimmy Sapelsa, and Mr. Kevin Fleming, and I really truly didn't bribe them all to show up here, but this is an example of the amazing team that is the Glover team, and so I am very proud to represent these teachers and these parents and these families and these students as principal of Glover Elementary School, so thank you for the opportunity. Just a little bit about Glover, we have 585 students this year, we have kindergarten through fifth grade, and there are 26 classrooms. We also have some very exciting and unique programs in our school, including the STEP program, which is a therapeutic support program for students with social and emotional disabilities, as well as CO-TAC classrooms in every grade, so we have a CO-TAC K all the way through to five, and you'll hear a little bit more about that later. We have 101 students currently receiving special education services, and as Principal Redden said, we have lots of active groups, they're very active. They're very active, as you can see. We have a site council, cultural committee, diversity committee. We have grade level facilitators who are working, one representative from every grade working together right now, which, by the way, I was remiss to not mention, our curriculum coordinator, Meredith Kemp, who can come on up as well if you'd like, Meredith. So Meredith is coordinating our grade level facilitators as we speak in the rollout of our new standards-based report card. So Meredith is here as, as well, but she's really instrumental in so much of our success. We also have a professional development committee, so lots, lots going on to support our efforts at Glover. When I arrived as the new principal of Glover, the mission statement was already there. It's a wonderful mission statement, I won't read it to you, but it's there and it really focuses on, you know, maximizing the individual potential of all students. And we are an inclusive district and, and our administrator of people personnel services and Tracy Grandow works very hard to, and our inclusion task force and everyone works really hard to make sure we are meeting the needs of all students. So our mission statement, and we promote the Milton Public Schools core values. And down at the bottom, really important to note, family interest and involvement are the foundation of our success. So as you can see, I'm flanked on either side by the teaching staff who makes every day so special for the students and the families who provide such support and involvement. So thank you to everyone. When I arrived, I, there was a school improvement plan in place. We revised a bit based on, you know, how things had happened. It was a 2014 to 2017 school improvement plan with some pieces in there that hadn't happened yet. So with the advice of Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, we did a little bit of tweaking and looking at our goals. And the site council supported me through that journey. Our first goal is to look at the number of students scoring in the proficient advanced categories. And we'd like to increase them by 10% from 2014 to 2017. And we have been successful with that, which is really exciting, but that's the data presentation that I'll do later. And we'd also like to look at our internal assessments and, and look at increasing the number of students who score below benchmark to at or above benchmark by the end of the year by 10% each year. And, and to do that, did I do that? No. To do that, we will work collaboratively and use data and information and assessments and, and come together as teams to make sure we're providing the best academic instruction we can. Our second goal, and this is a personal goal of mine as well, coming into the Glover School, is to increase the number and types of opportunities for family and community engagement that contribute to creating a positive, welcoming, and proactive school culture. And I know I have some Glover parents on, on the, the school committee who hopefully have experienced some of what we're working really hard towards here at Glover, which is to create a culture that is a home away from home for all involved, whether it's staff, students, families, everyone involved. We want them to feel that proactive, positive, welcoming culture. And the site council is a big part of that, PTO is a big part of that, all, all of the different things that we have going on. And our third goal is to look really closely at technology and the, the digital applications that we're using in the classroom every day. We know that we are teaching digital natives and we are digital immigrants as teachers. So we really need to have the supports in place to be able to, and, and the technology and the resources in place to be able to meet our children, our students where they are, which is vastly different than where we may be coming from. So recognizing that and, and meeting their needs effectively. So a big thank you, and I wasn't here for all of it, but I really appreciate it all because I see the benefits of all of it. And we, we feel it every minute of every day. We, we were able to increase our reading specialist staff. And as Principal Redden said, that is so valuable for so many reasons. Most of all because I walk into classrooms and the reading specialist is simply a part of the classroom fabric and a part of the classroom dynamic and there's small group instruction happening. But the, the teachers are able to benefit from watching that really high-quality, small-group instruction. And then it's sort of just this natural progression that happens in each and every classroom. So we're able to increase that. And we also, and this is a tremendous, tremendous, this has had tremendous impact on our STEP program. We have an adjustment counselor for our STEP program, thank you. And, you know, our, our STEP program, we have students who require a great deal of support day in and day out. And Mr. Powers, our adjustment counselor, is amazing. But he, you know, there are 585 students in the building and these children require a level of support that the district was responsive and, and realized that we needed additional adjustment counselor support. And that has been incredibly impactful in terms of success of these students in this program. We also, I was so fortunate to be with Meredith and, and many other administrators, part of the LETEO conference that we just went to and a LETEO partnership. And if you don't know what LETEO is, it's really an institute that focuses on early literacy and could not be more relevant and more applicable and more important right now in terms of the direction that we're going in the Milton Public Schools in terms of early literacy. So you have supported us through that. As, as Principal Redden said, there's some, there's a lot of targeted professional development. And I also want to highlight the common planning time that is happening now at every school and the fact that teachers are now having opportunities to come together and share resources, share ideas, collaborate. They look at data together, they make informed decisions based on data. They, they have that time. And, and as a teacher myself, that time is sacred, sacred time. So it's a real gift to all of our teaching teams that they have the opportunity to come together and share and collaborate. We learn best from each other. So thank you for all of those wonderful things that you've done for us. We, we, like I mentioned, we have CO-TAT classrooms in kindergarten through fifth grade. And I was with a parent of a student who's in first grade CO-TAT this morning, who was, who was quite honestly teary-eyed, thinking about the power and the impact that the CO-TAT program has and the difference that this makes in all children's lives. It is an amazing program. And we are really, you know, on the forefront in terms of the co-teaching model. This is something that other districts strive towards. But to have it in this building, K through five, is truly an amazing gift to all the teachers and the students. But the, the, when we met as a site council, the, the very first thing that we started looking at was the fact that in fourth and fifth grade, the CO-TAT classroom goes from a full, true CO-TAT classroom to a half-time CO-TAT classroom. So when you think about co-teaching in its finest form, it is so fluid, it is so, just, it is spontaneous spur of the moment, I'm going to teach this group, you're going to go do that group, we're going to, and it's, and it is truly the most responsive approach to student needs. And, and these children in these classrooms have needs. Some have demonstrated needs that are on IEPs. And I'm so lucky because Maureen is a CO-TAT fourth grade teacher, Allison is a CO-TAT third grade teacher, and Lauren is a CO-TAT second grade teacher. So no one can speak to the power of CO-TAT better than these teachers. But interestingly, where Allison and Lauren have a full-time special educator and general educator in the classroom at all times to, to do that amazing tag team that they do, and I have seen it and it's remarkable. Maureen, being a fourth grade teacher, you know, her special educator leaves halfway through the day. And it's not that children are not continuing to be supported in those classrooms because they absolutely are, but it's been, it's been an amazing work of magic to get all of the needs met because we don't have a full-time special educator in fourth grade and a full-time special educator in fifth grade. And as we know, needs don't change between third grade and fourth grade. So we feel strongest about advocating as a site council and as a school for the need for a full-time special educator in that CO-TAT four and in that CO-TAT five. Mine are prioritized in terms of need. We also wanted to reiterate the same points that Principal Redden made about a math specialist for the same reasons that I mentioned, the power of the literacy specialists in our building. The math specialist can be getting in to support students, but also model for teachers' best practices in terms of math instruction, particularly in small group instruction. And that's something you'll hear about in a moment. The assistant principal piece also goes down to that last bullet, something we talked about as a site council. A lot of what I deal with in my day as building principal comes out of the Glover Playground or the Glover Cafeteria. That's where it happens and we know that. And we need to increase support, we need to increase supervision, but we also need to increase support of our children at the, at, in those slightly unsupervised, unstructured settings. And so that may mean, and you'll see coming up, some, some more targeted support in terms of playground equipment and structures, but it also means personnel. And as much as I would love to be out there every minute of every day as, as the building principal without an assistant principal, it's difficult for me to be out there monitoring everything. So an assistant principal could help with that last bullet, which would be increased lunch and recess supervision, because we really need to make sure that we're supporting our students. We support them so much in these small classroom settings. And then we put them out there and there's over 100 of them and we, we send them out on the playground and we tell them to play. But we really need to support them more so that their social, emotional well-being is intact when they arrive back into the classroom. Because if it's not, they're not able to learn. So, so all of that comes into play. I, I envision an assistant principal being able to be there when I'm not to support the interactions of students in the less structured times. And we also are looking at literacy coaches. So as part of our work with the LETEO initiative, we're looking at how best to support teachers in terms of instruction. How best to support teachers in incorporating small group instruction, differentiated instruction, and using data to drive their instruction. So those are some positions that we'd love to see. I'm not going to belabor this because much of it is similar to what Principal Redden mentioned in terms of ELA instructional materials, STEM materials. We would like to talk a little bit about the Glover Library. The Glover Library is, currently shares space with the Glover Computer Lab. And this can be very tricky for the computer teacher who's teaching and the librarian who's teaching at the same time with over 50 children in the same room. And there isn't a wall and there is, it's just a, it's a divider. And so in addition, I had a parent tell me that they, their child brought home a book from 1971 the other day from the Glover Library, which is great because I love, I love all literature, but I think that we could, we could benefit from a, a little bit of a facelift in the, in the Glover Library. And I also, this is input from stakeholders, the occupational therapist spoke at length about universal design for learning resources. So those are things like therabands on chairs and these really cool, you know, stools that you can move around on. These work for every, every student and quite frankly, probably all of us. So, so these are things we'd like to see put in place in, in classrooms more globally. There's the playground stuff and some online resources. And then again, as part of our work with early literacy, we're looking at small group instruction and the importance of small group instruction as a, as a, as an integral part of the balanced literacy program. And this sounds sort of silly that I'm even putting this up here, but without the infrastructure in place in classrooms to support small group instruction, it's very difficult. And the infrastructure is pretty simple. It's those kidney-shaped tables with student-sized chairs and tables around the room in centers so that people can be, teachers can be grabbing students flexibly and meeting their needs on, on the go. So I just would be remiss in mentioning that, you know, we, we need the furniture. It sounds silly, but we need the furniture to support the initiative that we're putting into place with small group instruction, which would be supported by our literacy coaches and all of our work. And then the last piece, gosh, this seems like a lot. The last piece, I asked our instructional technology specialist to do a, a complete inventory of our existing technology at the Glover School. And we currently have 65 Chromebooks that are ready for PARC and MCAS. And our third grade and fifth grade that will be taking it this year are both over 100 students. So we only have two carts with newer Chromebooks. We really need to look at that. And then in grades K-1 and 2, again, along the lines of small group instruction and literacy centers, we would like to see technology integrated into these literacy centers, but in order to do that, we need more than two or three iPads per classroom. Ideally, we'd love to see six iPads per classroom so that when you're in, if you have 24 students and they're rotating through four different centers, you've got every child has access to an iPad where they're plugging in their headphones and they're going on the Screen Actors Guild and they're listening to an amazing story and then they're doing some sort of really rich literacy activity based on that story. The possibilities are endless, but we have to have the technology in the classroom to support it. There's that computer lab, I'd love to see, we do have this, the, the room equipped for it. There is a space that was once a computer lab, but it would be really beneficial to have that. And also, Jolly and Cameras, Osmos, Patty and I were talking about Osmos the other day, but just especially in the lower grades, that instantaneous ability to maneuver and manipulate things to show students and model things is really important. And we'd love to see that in, in the classrooms as well. Professional development will certainly be a part of that. And this slide just highlights some of the things we have going and some of the things we'd like to continue to see going. I've organized them in terms of goals and what we would need to put into place to support our teachers as they roll these kind of things out, including small group instruction, including family and community engagement, and including the technology that we hope we can put into place. But we can put as much as we want into place. If we don't provide the professional development for teachers to be able to use it effectively, it, it will, it won't translate. And what will our success look like? So you'll see later from, you'll hear later from me, our achievement gaps are continuing to close everywhere and they will continue to close. Differentiated small group instruction will continue to be incorporated in every classroom every day to best meet the needs of all students. We, we, our partnership between home and school will continue to be developed and will be responsive to the demonstrated needs of the community. Technology will be integrated and leveraged for deep learning and, and professional development will be offered so that teachers can really impactfully use that technology. And classroom libraries and texts in the Glover Library and in classrooms will be rich and updated and diverse and differentiated. So that's what we hope success will look like at the Glover School. That's it.
Questions? Dr. Donahue?
If we could just go back to your positions slide.
Absolutely.
Do you have, for the first, fourth, and fifth bullet points, do you have FTEs in mind?
So right now we have a 0.5 FTE special educator in four and a 0.5 in five. So we would be crease, create, increasing 1.0 FTE because it would be another 0.5 in four and a 0.5 in five. Literacy coaches would be a 1.0 FTE. And you asked about the fifth bullet?
Yeah.
So the, the fifth bullet would be sort of contingent on the third bullet if there was an assistant principal. It wouldn't be necessary. So it's, that's sort of a, a, that's sort of an up in the air.
Thanks.
Ms. Verella.
Thank you, and, and Mr. Redden too, these are, this stuff is very helpful. So you guys are at 585. Are you, are you the, the most full of the four elementaries? Or is Cali-Cottens higher? Cali-Cottens higher? A little bit higher? Okay. I just didn't, I didn't know Glover.
There's a lot though.
I know Cali-Cottens, I know Cali-Cottens is the biggest school though, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just never knew Glover to have that many students.
Yeah, there's a lot of students.
And, okay, no, then I asked that question, I lost my train of thought. I lost my train of thought. So, so for the, in the CoToc classroom, so the other thing, oh yeah, I, I want, so that the number of the five eighty-five and then, so how, how, what is the enrollment ratio in the CoTocs from one through five?
So we, we, we attempt to keep the enrollment numbers under twenty in the CoToc classrooms.
Right.
They vary in each grade level in terms of how many students are in each classroom. Ideally, we'd like to see the numbers as low as possible so we can be meeting the needs of all students in that classroom, but we also balance.
At four and five, what are they with, when you don't have full-time, like a full-time co-teacher, like the on-level and the special ed?
Sure. So there's seventeen in the CoToc four and eighteen in the CoToc five.
Okay. And then one other question. For the assistant principal, you had, you, I know that Dr. Donahue asked this, but it's point five, so would you just, when you say point five, would you, are you speaking about sharing it with another, you know, like morning one place, morning others? That's my question.
That's a great question. So right now, I'm very lucky to have, Meredith Kemp is a curriculum coordinator, but she also, you know, supports in many areas in terms of getting to common planning time, working with teachers, implementing curriculum, doing a lot of the things that I would love to do if I had more time. She's a point five. So my vision would be to increase, and it would be sort of a, a point five curriculum coordinator shared at, with a point five assistant principal so that, that would turn into a one point oh.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. All right, good.
By the, the reason that's so important is because to not have somebody there all day, every day is really tricky. And, and it's just, I'm, I'm called out of the building or things like that and I, we really need to have somebody else there. So to have it be not a point five, but be a one point oh would be wonderful.
Can I ask, just that I noticed the assistant principal showed up and Mr. Redden and yours. When was the last time this, our district had assistant principals at the elementary?
We've had a couple of models. Exact years, I don't know, but we had classroom teachers who received stipends, but that wasn't really advantageous because then they would have to leave the students they were in front of. And then we, in a lot of districts, when you, your enrollment hits a certain number, you have a half-time assistant principal. We had that model, but as budgets were tightened, the assistant principal, any kind of model at the elementary disappeared.
I mean, I, I mean, my, my daughter's a junior in high school and there's never been an assistant principal since she's been in first grade, but I didn't know how, how long before that.
And on that same note, the, you can see in the priorities, the priorities are teachers in front of the classrooms. And we've gone over with this school committee and the viewing public, the need for administrators, but we've always prioritized the teachers. And when I see this, all the talk about the science data and the success of science, a few short years ago, we had one science coordinator K through twelve. And the difference when we targeted a science director at the high school who teaches, a half-time science coordinator at the middle school, and Bernadette Butler, who services four elementary schools, the results have been phenomenal. And the professional development, the implementation of, for the school committee, for me, for the taxpayer, the implementation of these text materials and supplies, when you have somebody as Christopher Bagley Jones says, inspecting and expecting these materials to be used, the results on student, for student achievement is phenomenal.
Yeah. I mean, just to speak to that, I, for, for the people who are viewing at home, I, I think, you know, educating needs to be done, that people, I hear a lot of the times, people think that, you know, we're always too top-heavy administratively. And that is very, very untrue, that we are stretching and stretching and stretching and stretching. And, you know, the enrollment is, is going up and in order, you know, even, even I'm, I'm concerned hearing about, you know, you're five eighty-five in lunch and recess, and when you're focusing on the whole child and you're focusing on anti-boying, like that's when everything goes down. Not, not, not in the classroom.
I agree.
It's from there to the, to the cafeteria, from the cafeteria to the playground. That's when everything goes down. And there's only so much you can do when there's a hundred children. Yeah.
Absolutely.
So for the viewing public at home, they should be aware of that so that when administrators and assistant principals come up, it's not padding. Yeah. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. You said it better than I did.
Dr. Pavelchuk?
Yeah, I think to answer your question, thinking back, I think the last time we had a true assistant principal in the elementary school, and it wasn't even at every elementary school, was two thousand or two thousand and one.
Yeah. That would make sense.
And it was Janet Sheen.
It was Janet Sheen. I left in two thousand and one.
Jim Dodehew at Tucker.
Okay.
So there were two that I can think of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So great presentation. Just a few quick questions. The first is, what, what is the area that was the computer lab being used for now?
It's a classroom.
Okay.
However, we will have, we have a bubble fifth grade that is leaving to head to Dr. Spalding. And we, so we will have a space available. We do have a, a, a large kindergarten population though. So we, we, we could potentially negotiate the space, but it, it would need to be a priority.
Mr. Rock, can I ask a quick question on, on piggyback on that? I forgot because I got on my little administration tangent. But do you, when you say computer lab, do you guys not, because of Chromebooks and, I mean, even though I know all that's outdated, do you all not go to like computer lab once a week? They still do. They still have that in elementary, yes?
Yes.
But does, do they come to the classroom and you use the books or you go to the computers?
So we, so we have, we have somewhat of a makeshift lab set up in about a third of our library. And what that means is that our library is pretty tight quarters and our lab is very tight quarters and it certainly wouldn't meet the standards of most twenty-first century computer labs at this point. And it really makes instruction difficult when you have two teachers teaching at one time. We try to be very creative and not have classes in there at once, but with five hundred and eighty-five students, it's, it's virtually impossible.
Okay.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
A couple of questions. Great presentation.
Thank you.
A lot of great energy and happy people at the school, which was really great to see. I too was really concerned about the five eighty-five. Do we know how long that's been on an upward curve?
Forever.
Okay. Because it used to be under five hundred, right? So are we busting out at the seams of our classrooms? Are we, are we getting there?
So, so in our French immersion classes, we're, we're, we're at capacity in almost every grade level. And some grades are bigger than others. We have five third grades and five fifth grades. And what that means is in those classes, we, we have a pretty nice class size. But, but we do have a, a very large kindergarten population and, and, and a pretty large first grade population as well. So it appears that that trend is coming.
So that, to that point, Chairman Walker and member Varela have asked, and we're working with an organization, NESDEC, and Dr. Pavelchuk worked with them just today, tying them up with Town Hall on building permits. And they're coming in and Shilla Varela's going to join us Friday. And they're going to do projections on the population that's coming into the Milton Public Schools. But on behalf of the district, we have a very successful integrated preschool at the Collicott that years ago was one class. And now it's six classrooms. And our preschool at the Tucker, so that we have parents and guardians in the town of Milton who are very, very flexible. And so they register to go to their home school. But if the enrollment is capped, we offer them tours of other schools. And as I say publicly all the time, they fall in love with the school, the teacher, and nobody ever asks to go back. And so we have done a phenomenal job. I tell the story in another neighboring district, there might be thirteen children in one first grade and thirty in another. So we work really hard, Dr. Pavelchuk, Assistant Superintendent Sheen and I, along with the principals, so that to equalize the class size. So we are, we have an extra kindergarten this year. And I sat here and said, I hope Principal McDabbitt doesn't think that she might get that computer lab. I don't want to disappoint her because it's all based on the enrollment next year. And where we have the classes and on behalf of Milton Public School parents and guardians, citizens and students, we've worked really hard to keep those art and music rooms. Because when these schools were built, that was important to the parents and it was important to the advocates. And so we, we have said publicly that our elementary schools, there are no extra classrooms.
Mm-hmm. Can I?
Sure.
So I had two other comments. The reading specialist, do they work with the kids in the French immersion program?
So we have a, we have a French reading specialist who's a point five. And our English reading specialist is a one point oh. So yes.
Okay. And that's reading specialist versus special ed?
That's, that's correct. Yeah.
And we don't have any bilingual special needs teachers, correct?
No, we have ELE teachers for children who, English is their second language.
No, I meant for kids who are in the French immersion program. Anyway, that's a whole other issue, but I just wanted to ask about that. And then it's really helpful to hear why different items are on the wish list. I am calling it a wish list.
Yes, absolutely.
And there's a part of me that's feeling somewhat protective of all this excitement and energy because it is a wish list.
Yes.
And we're talking about potentially running into problems with space. And having been around for when, you know, Glover had those module classrooms, I'd hate to see us get there again. So I guess I'm saying, wow, space is really, as we've been saying, an issue. And also just to be protective of everybody, this is so we can understand what you'd like.
Right.
It's kind of like, you know, a holiday list for your kids.
Yep. I hear you.
Okay.
Totally understood, but.
Okay. But it's helpful to hear why things are important.
I appreciate the opportunity to share it, but I absolutely understand that.
Ms. Varela?
So two, just two, two observations, just to sort of follow up with, remember Jones just said, that I do think that, that you include the furniture and that you think about that piece. And there's nothing better than a kidney-shaped table, small group instruction. And environment is an important part of quality in terms of how you, how you plan for instruction and how that piece plays out, particularly in the early years. You're like, you can be like an octopus when you have one of those kidney-shaped tables. And when you have small tables that provide for center time and for small group learning, that's a really important part of quality. So that is a wish list and I hope that you can get that wish and perhaps through grants and other types of things. In the past, the MFE has supported those things.
Sounds like a great MFE.
It sounds like a great MFE grant.
Absolutely.
And I just want to speak to what Principal Redden said and what you said as well about the community. And when I first moved to Milton, I didn't know a single person in the town and I was a Glover parent. And I, I slowly learned about community through the Glover School. And, and just as the parent from the Cunningham School spoke about that piece, that piece is so important, outreach to parents, that involvement, because you can, you can grow so much as a person that way and you can find yourself sitting here many years later. Many wonderful memories working with Mrs. Flanagan on science at the Glover School and Mrs. Kemp when she was Miss Murphy. So I just really wanted to thank the both of you and the parents and the teachers for speaking to that piece because it's extremely important and it's such a powerful part of our community. There isn't any measure for that, actually. So thank you so much.
Sure.
I know we have CDM waiting, but I'd like to publicly recognize Jimmy Sopelso. And he's coming in this week and the perfect example with your junior achievement. Would you take one minute and talk about that success at Glover and we're going to look to replicate district-wide? So perfect segue from Ms. Varela.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so I've been on the board of Junior Achievement ever since I, my seventh grader was in kindergarten. And I asked the dumb question of, have you ever heard of Junior Achievement and do we do it in Milton Public Schools? And at the time, the principal said, I don't know what it is, why don't you go find out about it? And so I slowly figured out how to get Junior Achievement into the Glover Schools. We did as a parent volunteer. It's been at the Tucker School as a corporate-led volunteerism. And it teaches both after-school programs as well as adding to the social studies curriculum of financial literacy, entrepreneurism. And I think as a taxpayer, I expect the town to do as much as they can to get as many services as they can before they ask me to raise taxes. And I think programs like Junior Achievement that offer a real partnership, I think it's just really smart to look at that district-wide.
Well, because of your success, you guaranteed that it was a success, we're going to have a meeting to replicate it district-wide.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jimmy. And I just wanted to give the opportunity, Patty Facy is a first-grade parent of a student in the CoToc classroom, and these are all CoToc teachers. So if anybody had anything, and I'm putting them on the spot, but if you had anything you wanted to advocate for in terms of that, that full-time special educator in fourth or fifth grade?
First year in CoToc, and I'm enjoying it thoroughly. It's, it's working fabulously. It's definitely a challenge without the full-time special educator. So that would be optimum for all children to meet their needs. Again, it's working great, but that would be the ideal. Students have been used to the special educator in the room all day. And now the curriculum, definitely in fourth grade, the demands increase. So that would be the optimum. Thank you.
Having my daughter in the first grade in the CoToc is fabulous. She had a great preschool experience at Collicott for three years and great kindergarten first grade, but, and I can't imagine her going through fourth and fifth grade without having a full-time special ed teacher because it's really very important.
Can, for, for some parents, I know, which I will probably talk in time, but I don't know if everyone who is, doesn't, is not involved in CoToc classrooms understands and knows what it is and why it's so important to have those two full-time teachers, you know, in every class that you have it under the, you know. So just like, in like two minutes, go. What's CoToc? Either one, either one.
Okay. So, so our, and these guys can certainly speak to it better than I can, but our CoToc model is a model where we have students with significant needs on individual education plans with multiple layers of needs, whether it's social, emotional, academic, behavioral, lots of, lots of different stuff going on. And, 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 in, in conjunction with a set of students, and we, we refer to them as peer models, who are in the classroom to support. And the magic of it is you would never be able to go into any of these classrooms and identify who's who. And that is truly the magic of CoToc. These, you know, they see Mrs. White and Mrs. LaFort as their two teachers. There's nobody who's glued to anybody. They work seamlessly together. They, they flexible, they're, they're in groups that change. But the, the important thing is at all times in K one, two, and three, the children who have demonstrated needs as identified on IEPs are having those needs met by a special educator every minute of every instructional period. And I don't know, Allison, do you have anything else you want to add?
Hugely important, important to mimic what Maureen said. I've done also the point five position that Maureen's doing in the past and I'm currently for four years doing the third grade full-time. And you just see it in the children from the beginning of the year when they come into the end. In the third grade, I've seen such huge improvements emotionally, academically, across the whole child. And I know I felt like I was a little bit pulled in a million directions when I was the fourth grade, part-time CoToc teacher. And you do come back and you're kind of trying to pick up the pieces of where, what lesson, you know, you left off at. And the general ed teacher is sort of standing there trying to, you know, juggle fifteen different needs with different kids. And so it definitely, the support is definitely there and I feel like you do see student growth with a full-time special ed teacher.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if I could get back to those other two questions I had. On the professional development slide, on the professional development slide, are those all things that are in place or are there some things you're suggesting you add?
We have our, we have our, the, is our starting. Right now, there are 16, 47 partnerships within the home visits in terms of family outreach and homeschool communication is something that is currently ongoing, second step is ongoing. But these are all things that we would need to continue to, to support. So they're not, they're not done yet. If they have been, been started, they need to be continued.
Is there anything that's new?
Yes. So we are looking at those in that goal one, we're really looking careful. Yes, so, um, we are looking at those in that goal one, we're really looking carefully at that small group instruction and differentiation as well as the balanced literacy program training. So out of our left ear work, if we, um, uh, come to a decision regarding the direction of our balanced literacy program, we will need to put significant professional development in place. And right now, the PD has gone towards the Lucy Cockens Units of Study in Reading and Writing, and that's wonderful. But we're addressing the fact that there's more components to a balanced literacy program than just that, and we'll need to support that moving forward. And, and, and down at the bottom with technology, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of grassroots informal PV happening in every building regarding Google and, um, Google Suite and at specific applications. But, um, as, if we were to be able to get those technology resources into the classroom, we would need to provide additional professional development.
Okay. And lastly, on the literacy coaches, could you explain how they're different from reading specialists?
Absolutely. So, right now, our, our, our reading specialist, that's a great question. Our reading specialists are, um, almost wearing two hats. They're reading specialists because they work very carefully and closely with students with demonstrated needs in literacy. But they also, um, are in classrooms all the time modeling excellent small group instruction. Um, a literacy coach would be a designated person who would be solely responsible for the teacher of education piece of it. So going in and modeling and coaching and supporting small group instruction and differentiated teaching in literacy, so that the reading specialist can be doing more in terms of servicing students with demonstrated reading needs. So it would be sort of teasing apart and prying apart those two roles that currently right now, the reading specialist is amazing, or both of our reading specialists are amazing, and they, and they do seamlessly. But it would be, if we are looking at a more balanced literacy program and we are looking at additional components, the idea of having a literacy coach in there to help model and support teachers through the implementation of that would be really important.
Great. Well, thank you all for coming out and supporting Principal Dever.
Thank you. I just have to thank all of these guys. Thank you. Thank you. I owe you.
Next, Chairman Walker, I'd like to invite to the table citizens for diverse Milton. If citizens of diverse Milton would join us at the table? And may I ask Vee Vu to, to join us at the table too? Thank you. Good evening. And thank you for your patience. So, uh, before we begin, uh, would you introduce yourselves to the school committee and the viewing public? I could, but then we're going to be here till eleven o'clock because I'm going to tell great stories. So, would you introduce yourselves?
My name's Chris Davin.
Cynthia, guys. How do you bring?
And Pat Ladd.
And I'm Vee Vu, the district data specialist.
So, very briefly, I've invited, uh, CDM to join us tonight because they're partners in our diversity efforts in the Milton Public Schools. And back in two thousand and one, a school committee member and then, I believe, chairperson, Burne Lovely, crafted a diversity policy that was one of the first diversity policies in, uh, the Commonwealth in any school district. And tomorrow, our diversity report has grown from a very brief presentation in two thousand and one to, uh, over the years, what school committee has requested. So did somebody write to me today seventy-six slides? Seventy-six slides, um, demonstrating all the different, um, cuts that we take and levels that we examine the diversity in the Milton Public Schools. And I can tell you as your superintendent, um, thanks to Vee Vu and a talented group of administrators in working with CDM, that we refer to this data all through the years. This data drives our instruction, it drives our practices, um, we reflect on it, we create our goals based on this data. And, um, the diversity in the Milton Public Schools, um, I, I say publicly to people that these are the most fortunate high schoolers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to go to Milton High School. They're going to a diverse high school where, um, the programs are varied, a comprehensive high school that can maximize their potential. And evidenced by those three seniors at the end of the table, no, a senior, a junior, and freshman? Junior? And our senior, um, they could testify to this. But, uh, in our diversity report, Chairman Walker has asked me to highlight, um, uh, just a few slides, but I wanted to recognize CDM and start with CDM. Uh, in the Milton Public Schools, I hope they were proud when they saw the school presentations about their diversity committees. And so, every school has a PTO and a site council by law. We have diversity committees because of the initiative and the work of CDM. The Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Personnel and I meet every month with the CDM leadership. And then, over the last few years initiated by CDM, all our diversity committees come together twice a year. And we collaboratively develop themes. And, um, the outcome of those themes, um, re- really impact the instruction and the achievement of the children in our district. CDM is partnered with the school administration on staffing. See, as I sat here, I said the committees, CDM is looking at the transitions with us from grades five to six and eight to nine. Um, again, the athletics, but to see, uh, the, uh, partnership with CDM, they're looking more than just at the diversity on the teams at Milton High School. What are the reasons for the diversity and the lack of diversity on some of the teams? So, we're looking this year to partner and look at the feeder teams and the participation. So, as I said, I could keep you here all night, and I was neglected past years because to give a diversity report about the Milton Public Schools without CDM is not to tell the full picture and not to introduce, um, uh, the other half of our partner in these efforts. And so, on behalf of the district, for your work, um, for your honesty, for what you bring to the table advocating for the Milton Public Schools, I want to recognize you. And I would ask, um, again, we have slides tonight, a few slides to share with the viewing public. Uh, this will be online tomorrow, but I would ask the school committee and the viewing public, uh, CDM wouldn't come if they didn't have a story to share or, um, a message to give. And I would, uh, turn this over now to CDM. And then we'll quickly show a few pieces of the data, but I think your message is important to this community.
So Mary, um, thank you so much for this, Superintendent Gormley. Uh, one of the things that we want to thank the, uh, school committee is to inviting, for inviting us to this discussion, because as you know, we have, as Superintendent Gormley said, uh, spent a number of years, a lot of years, decades in fact, um, working with the school system in terms of increasing an awareness and support of diversity, uh, throughout the system. So, you know, we feel that our relationship is a strong one. We think that, uh, there's been good progress made, um, over the years. Uh, and, but we also think that there is more to be done. And so, one of the things, um, Superintendent Gormley mentioned some of the successes that we've had. Um, the twice yearly, uh, system-wide diversity committee meetings are one of them. And in fact, tomorrow evening, uh, we'll be convening a number of parents, uh, staff from the schools, community leaders, uh, and others, um, to, um, really to do the first meeting of the year. So we're very excited about how this has been institutionalized and that this is something that, um, really, I think, helps to spark a lot of conversation and really supports the work that is being done at the local schools in their diversity committees. So we really applaud that. Um, the other thing that we'd like to acknowledge is, um, Superintendent Gormley last year, um, really invested in, um, professional development with staff around issues related to cultural competency and diversity. That is some very important work, and we know that the staff has really bought into that work and joined with it. One of the pieces that we actually noted from that was that the staff of color has created their own affinity group out of that work. And so we know how important it is for things like professional develop around, development around diversity. And we really applaud the, um, the support that has been given to that. Now, one of the other pieces, um, that we're looking at is that we believe that the structure for, um, a really robust, uh, embracement of diversity is in place. And part of our goals in working with the schools and with superintendent is to really try to make it much more effective and efficient than, than it is. And so, for example, we have diversity committees at the schools. We're doing these twice yearly, um, system-wide diversity meetings, but we want to make them really important and to really power the work that, um, the schools are doing. We do not want to make this an overlay for them, but actually an integral part of how they see getting their jobs done. And so, we really appreciate, um, the opportunity to work with the schools on those issues. Now, as, um, Superintendent Gormley said, we wouldn't be here if we didn't want to talk about a few things. Um, we do think that the diversity report is a very robust report. Seventy-six pages is a lot of pages, uh, but I, but it's an important seventy-six pages, and we've, uh, actually gone through them. And, um, we'd like to talk about five issues with you tonight. Uh, and the first of the five is, um, the continuing achievement gap between, um, students of color, particularly African Americans, and other subgroups, uh, white in particular. We'd also like to talk about the under-representation of children of color in French immersion. I mean, those are some things that we noticed in the report. And this is a question that we've had is about, we looked at the diversity of languages in the system and wanted to also engage with you around the, um, support that the school system gives to, um, children who, who English is not their first language. Superintendent Gormley has already talked about, this year, we are going to be focusing with her in our second diversity, system-wide diversity meeting on athletics, because we know that many times the schools end, uh, the recipient of, uh, a lack of diversity in certain sports, uh, because of, you know, the feeder systems. And we wanted to talk a little bit more broadly, not just with the schools, but also with the town. But it, it does play out very strongly in the schools, and that's athletic diversity. And then, um, lastly, um, we want to talk about staff, um, demographics. So those are the topics that we think that we would like for, uh, to engage in a conversation with you about, and that we believe that, um, uh, the, the school committee has been doing a lot of work about, on some of these topics. And we'd like to think about, how do we get better on? So I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues and my, um, to talk, and since Claudia is sitting next to me, maybe we will start with her.
Okay. So I, um, just want to echo everything that Pat has said. And, um, just to say too, um, you know, we've been at this for a while. I think CDM has been meeting with the superintendent, um, for over two decades, right? And so, and it's really great to see all of this, um, this data here. We've seen pieces of this over the years, and it, but it's really great to see this all right here. And, um, you know, I really want to salute your, um, commitment to this issue, Superintendent Gordley, Gormley, as well as to the, um, to the school committee and the great data that's been put together. So, um, a couple issues, um, that we sort of noticed as we were going through is, um, while, so just kind of looking at the high school level, you know, one thing that sort of stands out is, um, while there's great progress in, um, in the number of students taking PSATs and SATs, um, if you look at, um, if you, if you look at that longitudinally, um, there's still, there's a persistent gap among children of color, particularly African American children, uh, students versus, um, the overall students and, and particularly with white students. So, um, that's something that, uh, sort of stands out to us as a group that's been looking at this and thinking about this for a long time. And, um, in that the, you know, it is a, we know that it's a goal of the school committee, uh, or the school system, you know, to, to hack, to kind of cut that achievement gap, um, over, you know, by twenty eighteen. So that's a, that's something that persists. And, you know, I hope that we can get, we can sort of engage in a conversation about that, about sort of what do you think is working, what we all think is working, and what needs to happen in order to really, uh, cut away at that gap between student outcome, with student outcomes. Another area that if you look at, um, again, tremendous gains on the number of students taking AP tests, um, in high school, uh, so those numbers are really up, and that's tremendous, um, including students of color. Uh, but when you look at sort of what the outcomes are in those tests and the students that are actually going to go on and get credit for them, uh, in college when that's a possibility, so the number of students who are getting, um, three or higher, uh, or is it three or higher, above three? Yeah. Um, so that number really drops off when you look at, um, uh, particularly with African American students. And so that's something that, you know, the numbers aren't huge, and it seems like those are, um, it's something that if there were concerted effort, you know, put into it, which, you know, I know there is, but sort of thinking about like, well, what's working, um, and how to really get those students over, um, over the hump in order to be able to, if they're, if they're putting effort in to take those classes and the, um, and the test to be able to actually get credit for them. And it, and of course, it requires thinking not only of what's happening at test time, but many years back and the, the level of classes that students are enrolled in. I don't think we have that data here, but in fact, that's one of the first things that, that CDM began looking at with, um, with the superintendent several years ago, is if you look at, you know, what level of classes our students enrolled in, um, from the, from the very early years of, um, of high school. And so, you know, and then think forward to the, to those numbers. So, and I think, um, I just want to say, and I don't know if our, what's our next topic on athletics or? Okay, but anyway, I just wanted to say, um, I know that, you know, one of the things as we think about, um, you know, what, what works for students, I know a couple of years ago, there was a survey done of students and thinking about what's their connection in the building. And that's, um, that's around academics, it's around performing arts, it's around athletics. Um, and, uh, you know, and, you know, all, all across the board. And so, when we think about what's really working for students, it's, it's those very personal connections that the teachers that are here and all of you, um, and all of us can make, all, you know, uh, as part of the school system, we, you know, we're all part of it. So, anyway, those are just the points I want to, to flag around academics.
To stay on the, um, academic piece, one of the things that, uh, we've had a question over the years about the under-representation of, uh, students of color in French immersion. Uh, that's an area that we would like for, to have more information on. Uh, once again, um, parents choose, uh, where they want their children to go. But one piece that we've talked about is why are so many children, uh, parents of color choosing for their children not to be in French immersion? Um, and that's such a, you know, it's, it's like one of the jewels of our system. And so, one of the pieces that we talked to is, you know, can we understand that data a little bit more about why? Not the results speak for themselves, and children of color are, you know, about half the amount, uh, percentage in those classes as others. Um, and so, that's one thing that we kind of would like to just kind of bring to the forefront and just start to ask ourselves. I know there's been a lot of discussion about French immersion over the years and, and to, for us to actually take that, um, view that's more of a, a little bit more of a racial view and say, you know, since students of color are such an important part of the system, why aren't they represented at a, at the same rate in those and taking advantage of those programs? Um, and lastly, on the, um, uh, another question on the academic side is that we did look at the data around language diversity. And, um, and that is just one of the pieces that we thought about was, you know, And, um, and that is just one of the pieces that we thought about was, you know, how are we supporting children who come to our school system where English isn't their first language? Uh, and there's such a broad diversity of languages in there. And we saw in hiring, um, as one of them. So I don't know how many children are speaking that as their primary language. Uh, and we know that there are some supports in the school, but really kind of thinking a little bit more thoughtfully about what are those children? What's the experience there when you come into a school system where you're not in the majority around language skills? And how, um, do those children do in our system? And so, um, those are some questions that we would like to, uh, ask the system, but also the school committee to, you know, ask for the data on some of that. So with that, I think, um, we'd like to turn it over to, um, Cynthia to talk about athletics.
I'd like to thank you all again for inviting us. It, it's important that we be part of, um, the conversation about what's going on in the schools and the, and the students. Um, so, looking at the graphs, you all have seen the diversity committee report, the diversity. Some of the sports are more successful than others, um, for students of color. Quickly, for those who haven't seen the report, cheerlead, the ones that have over thirty percent of students of color is cheerleading, football, soccer, volleyball, basketball, indoor and outdoor track, swimming, wrestling, rugby, and tennis. And those that are lacking are cross-country golf, hockey, baseball, crew, and softball. So we understand that there's many factors that, um, affect why these statistics are the way they are. Some sports need prerequisite skills such as swimming test for crew. And, um, for hockey, you have to have very good skating skills. And other sports build on skills learned as young children on the town sports. These include baseball and soccer. Um, the athletic director, two or three years ago, met with us and, um, there was some, there was a meeting at Tucker. And what he was trying to do was get some of the parents there involved in understanding in why it's important to get your kids into sports early. You know, I moved here from Jamaica Plain and I remember saying to my kids, "Why don't you join the soccer team in high school?" And they looked at me like I was crazy because I really didn't understand the whole pipeline. And, um, so I'm sure there's lots of other people who don't understand that that, how important that is. Um, so we were happy to see that, that director was willing to meet with us and talk with us. Um, also that he was going to be talking with his staff and the other coaches on, um, brainstorming why, um, some teams seem to be doing really well with recruiting and including people of color, and yet others were lacking. I mean, some of these that I, I mentioned, um, they have zero kids of color. And, and that's an issue. So, um, a couple of thoughts that we had was that, um, the, the athletic director and the coaches continue to discuss why some teams are more successful in recruiting kids of color and how to implement common best practices. Um, I'd like for them to collect the data, not only of who is on the teams, but who is trying out on the teams. Because I think that that will give you some information also. And, um, I think the professional staff development on diversity is wonderful. And I would like it to include, um, the full-time and the part-time coaches. Because I'm, from what I hear, I'm not sure that the part-time coaches are getting that. Um, and then lastly, that the communication with the coaches and the director and the administration and the diversity committees, um, continue to talk because it's, um, it's a key factor to make sure that all the kids of color feel welcome to, um, engage with these teams. Thank you.
Could we just see the other, not just spring, but the other seasons?
So, um, when CDM is done, I'm going to have V briefly go through. We highlighted to Jim and Walker's request is almost exactly what CDM referred to. But this will all be posted tomorrow, but we're going to briefly go over that.
Page four on the report speaks about staff.
Want to go to four?
Staffing was actually the reason I got involved with diversity work in Milton. Cause I have two sons, they're out of the system now, but at the time, uh, they entered the system when I moved here from Dorchester. And all the teachers were, all the teachers are white. My sons are white. I don't think it's good for, I didn't think it was good for my sons to have all white teachers. Since then, the percentage of teachers of color has increased markedly, but it's still single digits. In the report, you can see that over the last five academic years, from twenty-eleven, twelve to twenty-fifteen, sixteen, the percentage of staff of color district-wide has increased two percentage points from seven point, seven percent to nine percent. Slow progress, but progress. That progress has been due to the elementary school staff composition change. Uh, primarily at Cunningham Tucker. That progress drove that seven to nine percent increase. Pierce and the high school unfortunately did not improve at all over that time. So, that's an area for the, uh, for attention in the hires that come up. And every year, there's like thirty, forty new hires, system-wide. Uh, and Mary has implemented policies, Superintendent Gormley has interested, implemented policies over time to bring the attention of the principals to the boards of recruiting and selecting, uh, staff of color. So, we hope that continues. The increases from eleven, twelve to fifteen, sixteen have been primarily in aides and administrators and principals doing great at the principal level. Secretaries, administrative assistants, technicians, and teachers has not been so hot. Has not been much of an improvement there. One thing that I don't believe is in the report is, uh, support staff like lunch ladies and custodians. And we were talking at, in our meeting about the importance of people in those positions to setting a tone, a climate, a welcoming atmosphere for students. Uh, so we'd like to see them reported on as well, and we would like to see the numbers there. And just before closing, if you haven't already been invited to the system-wide meeting tomorrow, or if you have, please come, it's going to be good. It's going to be interesting. Yeah, four-thirty to six-thirty. Brother Slaughter is going to be leading the way, it's going to be a good time.
Right here at the high school, so.
Right in the library.
In the library.
Briefly, um, we, we have the topics that you want addressed. And, um, the ELE came up tonight. I think it would be very valuable for presentations to follow up. But, um, V, would you, if we started at the beginning, very briefly, um, these are the areas that Chairman Walker asked me to extract. Ironically, they're the topics that CDM addressed. And, um, both of these brief, the briefer presentation and the full presentation will be posted tomorrow. V?
Okay. Um, I think a lot of you have referred to the information in these slides, so I'll just go through them quickly for the viewing public. Um, but what you can see here is really the breakdown, um, of, uh, the school popul, the student population of Milton Public Schools for the past five years. So in the top right corners, you can kind of see the percentage. Um, the purple are white students and the yellow are non-white students. So you can see that over the past five years and even going back further for the past decade, it has really consistently stayed at around, um, thirty percent of our student body are student of color.
And then the detail for the viewing public in each school, you'll be able to, um, identify the diversity in each school.
So at the Cali Pot Elementary School, we are at about fifteen percent student of color for this past fifteen, sixteen school year. At the Cunningham, that's about twenty-one percent. At Glover School, twenty percent. Tucker School, sixty-one percent. Um, Pierce Middle School is thirty-one percent. And Milton High School is thirty-seven percent. So this is the slide regarding, um, the, the race composition of our staff, um, that, uh, that CDM just referred to. So you can see kind of, uh, the, the, the growth, uh, the percentage from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. We have about seven percent, um, staff who are non-white. And in the past school year, that number has increased to nine percent or forty-seven, um, members of our staff members who are non-white. Um, and these numbers are pulled directly from the information that we are required to report to the State Department of Education. So they include, um, teachers, aides, administrator, administrative assistants, central office staff, but they do not include, um, as the CDM members mentioned here. They do not include lunch, um, personnel, athletic personnel, or, uh, food services personnel.
But, but we can, um, gather that data for a, for the presentation.
So here you kind of see the breakdown of, um, the racial demographic of our staff by each of the categories. So for teachers, in the latest school year, we have eight percent of our teacher are staff of color. Um, for the aides, eleven percent. But you also notice that the, the bars are higher or lower and that indicate the total volume of that type of staff in the district. Administrators, principals, and coordinators, so our leadership team, um, pretty diverse, the most diverse of all these categories. So we have twenty-three percent of our administrative leadership team as staff of color. And for secretaries, administrative assistants, uh, and, and business tech support, that's five percent of that category. So, looking at high school athletics. Um, here we have the total, uh, the breakdown of the total participation in our athletic program at the high school, uh, by each racial category. And on, um, in the graph above, I also have the breakdown of our total high school population by racial categories. So you can kind of compare the, the top graph with the bottom graph and see if the percentages are mirroring each other. So last year we have, so the year before, in fourteen, fifteen, we have about sixty-five percent of our total student body involved in the athletic program. And this past year, in fifteen, sixteen, that number, uh, dropped to, uh, fifty-four percent of our student population at the high school playing sports. So these are.
V, before you leave that, will you speak to the diversity on the bottom part?
So at the bottom part, you can kind of see, um, um, for African-American student, sixteen percent of the total participation in our athletic program come from African-American students. And African-American students make up twenty-three percent of our total student, high school student population. So that's a difference of six, six, seven percent. Asian students make up about six percent of our total high school population. And they are represented at five percent in our athletic program.
Thank you.
Hispanic or Latino, four percent of our total population. They are represented at three percent of our athletic program. Um, and then white students made up sixty-three percent of our total high school population. And they are at seventy-one percent, um, in the athletic program. So you can see that there's, uh, a lot of representation of white students in the athletic program, more, more than their share of the population. Okay, so these slides, these slides just really highlight the particular sports that are, um, thirty percent or more, um, with students of color, diversity. So.
And Cynthia did a good job summarizing and I know we post it tomorrow.
Yeah, so I'm not going to go through them, but you can kind of see what the numbers breakdown are. Um, and then we just, uh, very recently received our, uh, advanced placement data for the school year fifteen, sixteen. So I added them in here. So when you look at this breakdown, you can kind of see the percentage of students who participate in each type of assessment. So SAT, SAT subject test, the AP, PSAT for sophomores and for juniors.
Sorry, he's getting upset with you. It's number different.
Um, so that, each bar represents the students of, um, of color who took the test. And bear in mind that these are self-identified by students on the actual test when they take it. So the number of minority students, the overall, of the overall population at Milton High School is thirty-seven percent. So we want to see around thirty-seven percent or so, uh, in each of these testing.
And so, we've worked really hard, um, and again, the achievement has to follow the participation. Um, but this is very, very important, um, to the high school staff and the leadership of the district.
So what this slide is saying is that we have, um, the correct proportion of representation of our students of color in all of these assessments. Last year, the A, the student of color, uh, participated in the AP at about twenty-eight percent. And this year, that percentage has improved to thirty-four percent. Big improvement. So, this is more statistic about the AP, but about sixty percent of our juniors and seniors take AP classes.
And then, and then what you've circled?
So they pretty much are, yeah, around sixty percent, fifty-nine, fifty-nine.
And to the point that one of the CDM members said, is this, um, oh, the next is the, um, scoring?
Um, so this is talking about low-income students, um, taking the, an AP participation. So in Milton High School, um, the percentage of low-income students is around twenty percent. And the percentage of stu, of low-income students who took the AP are around, is around twelve percent. So there's a little bit of a gap there, but this is actually an improvement over last year.
And nationally, that is a huge issue. And we, um, and it actually comes from the federal level, um, uh, through the, um, SATs and the APs for students on free and reduced, um, the reduced amount to take the AP test. So that's something that we're battling all the time so that students don't think the cost of the fee of the test would ever keep them in a public school from enrolling in the course.
And one thing that our, our guidance director told me also is that, you know, high school kids don't want to self-identify as being low-income and having to, you know, go to the guidance counselors and, and asking for the application and all that. So they have a process in place where we already have that information, where we want to make it seamless and easy for students to, um, to be able to take advantage of that, really. To allow them to take the AP.
So ba, so back to the qualifying?
Yes. So, this slide is saying that, um, the percent of exam with qualifying scores, so that scores three, four, or five on the AP, has consistently, consistently improved over the past seven, eight years up there. Um, so last year, we were at seventy-three percent of all exams that were taken were, had a qualifying. So last year, we were at seventy-three percent of all exams that were taken were, had a qualifying score. And in the year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, that percentage increased to seventy-six percent. So every year, you can see an incremental increase. We're doing well with the AP. And this is even with an open enrollment. A lot of districts that we know that we want to compare ourselves to, you know, might have higher AP scores, but they have a very selective enrollment policy in regards to AP classes and who can take them. But in Milton Public Schools, any student who wants to take an AP class is eligible to take it.
And in the Milton Public Schools, that, those kind of regulations existed. And we should recognize Dr. Mary Grass O'Neil and who spent years and was a tremendous amount of work with parents and staff to have open enrollment and advanced placement is really huge and it's a culture change and it's an opportunity for all children.
Can I just say, as a parent of a high schooler, even from the days when I went to high school, and maybe it is different, but I was astounded at the amount of kids that take AP. I mean, and how much AP. Because we were, it was selective back in the eighties when I was in high school. Not everyone could take it, even if all of a sudden you were soaring in a subject sophomore year or freshman year. So I really want to applaud the district and, you know, the fact that-
The high school leadership.
Yeah, and the high school leadership that, I mean, there are so many kids that take AP up here and do well. You know, so I applaud them.
And for those teachers at the table, my experience has been when these teachers go for this training in advanced placement classes with other teachers from across the Northeast that teach these classes. And a teacher doesn't teach five AP classes. So I've seen a correlation to teachers who go, and again, before PACC or MCAS, these teachers were being evaluated. The achievement was being evaluated and I see a correlation to the achievement and to the crossover to the instruction. And there's a culture at Milton High School that when there are multiple teachers who teach advanced placement classes, the opportunity for them to plan and work together. And one quick story, and I promise, we have a teacher in James Economics, in Economics, and two different levels of Economics. And that teacher used YouTube lessons and really went for the professional development and the results of his instruction are extraordinary. And so those are students who might not be math students, who might not be English, who might not be science. Through the history and the economics, there are opportunities for all students at Milton High School to have the experience. And add music.
So this is the breakdown of the AP qualifying scores by race. And you can kind of see the first one-
And so this was CDM, this slide CDM spoke to. And again, this is the work that we do every single day to increase the percentage of students in each of those categories, groups, to achieve higher.
This is qualifying scores by low income. So at Milton High School, with the two thousand fifteen, sixteen AP results, sixty-five percent of our low-income scores are qualifying scores. And that is an increase over last year, which was at fifty-seven percent. So you can see year after year, there is improvement in the data. And I thought this was really interesting too. Nationally, that percentage was only at thirty-nine percent. And this was a couple of years back, two thousand fourteen. But even if they grew a couple of percentage point, the population of low-income students at Milton High School is doing much better than the national average. Lastly, we have the SAT data. And there are, there are many slides here, but what I want to draw your attention to really is the increase in the median, in the mean SAT score for these students over the past five years. So they're slight increases, but you can see that there's definitely an increase in almost every subgroup. We went from, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, from the average score of five hundred twenty-seven to five thirty this year. And that's for all students and then each of the subgroup, you can kind of see how it breaks down. And this is for writing. You can kind of see the increase from five oh four in thirteen, fourteen to five twenty-four in fifteen, sixteen. And this is a breakdown for the racial subgroups.
What was the slide right before this one?
This one is economically disadvantaged, special education, high needs. And then we go into a slide with just all the, the race subgroups.
Thank you.
And you can kind of see the dark blue line is kind of inching upward and that's the line for all students. So five oh four in thirteen, fourteen to five twenty-four in fifteen, sixteen for writing. Math is a... In last year, in fourteen, fifteen, the mean score was five thirty-eight. In fifteen, sixteen, the mean score is five fifty-five. So slowly inching upward. And you can kind of see for the special education subgroup here, in thirteen, fourteen, it was three ninety-six. And just this past year, it was four forty-three. So there's definitely improvement. So this is the math mean score by race. And again, you can kind of see it inching upward.
Thank you.
That's it.
So one of the things that we, I mean, this is great data about sports. And so we really feature county-based sessions in the system because in order to start to ask some of the, some of the achievement gap pieces in particular, but also the level of staff that gives to you or athletics, it's important first to be grounded in the data. And so we have spent a number of years working with Superintendent Gormly to get this data in the right place. One of the pieces that we said is that, and we know that this is a goal of the school committee also to reduce, to get the achievement gap. One of our concerns is that although the system itself is improving, as we just said, and you see those increases going up, that you do not see a corresponding increase for African-Americans. And given that we're twenty-seven percent of the school population, you know, that's a concern for us. Other subgroups have done very well and we, you know, low income, we think that that's a great story. But we do have a significant concern about the African-American community. You know, our inability to reach a default goal of reducing the gap. And if I'm not mistaken, things that the school system has, has a goal of reducing it a half in three, three-year period. And you put advancement budget dollars against that. One of the things that we have been thinking about and discussing among ourselves is, isn't it time for us to take a pause to look at how bad one is, the extent, and what's working really well, because some things obviously are, and what things do we need to pivot on? Because we're not getting the results we're not going to see unless something miraculously happens. You're not going to see a fifty percent reduction in the gap by the next year.
It's the irony, I don't know if you're going to stay or watch or watch the rerun, but the principals are all here tonight to do their data presentations to show, again, in the, each of the subgroups where achievement has been made, where they think the targeted funds have gone and what's working. Claudia wants to stay. Pat, that's what she was saying.
Can we just take a pause? Someone's cellphone, can you just, yeah, I'm sorry, can you just, I'm sorry, just turn it off. So because it's going to interrupt you. Is it off now? Okay, sorry.
So, so to that point, following this presentation, again, your segue into the data presentations that the principals will be giving, and they will identify particular grade levels, where they saw progress and achievement being made and what they identify as the reasons for that achievement and how they can replicate it, again, with African-American blacks and with every one of the subgroups that we have, the special education and the low income. So that's, that presentation, if you're not here to stay, if you had watched the rerun, I think it will be very, very valuable.
Ms. Begley-Jones?
So one of the things that, and I hate to say how long I've been at this table, anyway, but I look at the relationship that you all have and Superintendent Gormly and how she's very passionate about this issue. And I think that you are really helpful in driving this issue for us. And I think Superintendent Gormly feels like, you know, this is her priority. I don't, I don't know how to explain it, but it's really good to see that. And that I like the fact that you talked about the town and the school in terms of the feeder sports around athletics and that the athletic director two years ago did that outreach and I hope we really look forward to that being one of the efforts, is the feeder sports as well as the athletic director being very involved in that. Because we know for kids, it's a lot about the relationships that they have with their principals and their teachers and the coaches that are there and the recruitment. Not like, oh, you're a superstar recruitment, but come on, let's, you know, try this out. And I'm really glad to hear that data about the SATs and the PSATs because I don't think that that's always been true. I mean, I think that there's been a real improvement in that and I'm glad to see that. And having V give us this great data presentation as usual is really great for us to see what's there. I guess I would also be really interested in, and maybe not at this time, but just also what are some of the other solutions that you can help us think about? Because I do think, I remember when there were not diversity committees in all of the schools. And it's so great to remember that there are now and that's a real improvement. But then where do we go from here? I'm rambling, but I just, I think it's great that you are so involved with Mary and that Mary is so involved with you and that we're getting this data to look at. And we have some places to still go, obviously. So another time, I'd love to hear solutions or ideas about what we're doing and what we could be doing better.
Ms. Varela?
Yeah, thanks for coming tonight and sharing all of your thoughts and concerns. So a couple of things that I wanted to just comment on about, with regards to the areas that you're querying about. So number one, to echo what Begley-Jones said about sports. So I remember that was our former AD, two ADs ago. We have a brand new one this year. But I think that, I think that we should strongly support your recommendations of all of the, all of the coaches, the coaches reaching out to do that. But the other thing is, and I wanted to ask you all, being, which I think it's great that there is a Citizens for Diverse Milton. But have you, I don't know how, and how big your organization is, but I'm not going to use the word put pressure. I'm going to use the word reached out to Milton Soccer, Milton Junior Wildcats. Like, it's kind of the thing, like Mary says, you don't wake up one day and all of a sudden you can take AP, you know, like an AP course. It's, unfortunately, I'm a mother of athletes, so when you said that, you know, I say that to my, I say that to my kids too. Like, why don't you try, you know, this sport? Like, Mom, I haven't been taking that since first grade. It's not, you know. So it, and unfortunately, it's a more competitive atmosphere and kids are going to be intimidated, like you say, for trying out for certain sports because they haven't been playing it since second or third grade. But the more that even at PTO meetings or like if, if, if you can reach out and ask, you know, ask those people to talk, to market and to go to the elementary schools. I know that there was one at Tucker, but you could do all four. And, and just try to, to work through those channels about recruitment as far as sports. Because I think the more kids that play that sport in an earlier age, you know, are going to feel, especially in the areas of baseball, are the ones that you mentioned, that children of color are not playing, you know. And then I think that would be a huge, that whole feeder system needs to be improved just to, just to let them know that the organizations are here and, you know, I always, I always feel like the PTO meetings are a really good place because you have an agenda and then you have the speaker of, I don't know, the, like, the girls softball program or, do you know what I mean? I mean, those are the places where you're going to get that attention for sports. To have those kids, for the parents to be like, where do you sign up? When's the deadline? You know, where's the organization? What's the website? Because everyone's busy and you're like, oh, I missed the softball signup. Oh, I missed, you know, the junior Wildcats signup. So, and they're going to be more comfortable playing at an earlier age that will then, then as they move up the high school, up to the high school level, I think you'd get more kids playing in, in some sports that maybe they, they're, they're not, they're not showing up, that they are playing as far as the data goes. The other question that I had, because I've asked a lot about the staffing issue that you, that you spoke to about, about people of color not having a number of people of color teachers in the classroom. And when I ask Superintendent Gormly about that, sometimes they do go to national statistics about how many people of color are becoming teachers. And I don't know, Dr. Pavlicek spoke to that, that the percentage is, you know, on a national level is very, very low. I don't know if he has, I know you've mentioned stats before, or just the average.
The last one I heard was nine percent of graduate.
Yeah, so, you know, it's nine percent. So I, as, the other question I would ask you guys or whatever, if you give feedback as a, as a diversity committee, in, in communities and, you know, you know, diversity communities or are people reaching out to advocate, I don't know, even, even at the university level, the high school level to try to recruit more people, more people of color to go into education, to, to want to become a teacher? So that there's, I mean, because I know that Superintendent Gormly definitely does try to do aggressive recruitment. But again, the percentage of, of people of color who are become, especially African-American, who are becoming teachers are so much lower. So, you know, the pool of applicants is just that much, so I didn't know, that's why I have always asked, like, what's being done at a national level to, you know, inspire more people of color to be an elementary school teacher or that kind of thing? That there'd be a better pool of applicants to go, go to. I mean, that's a national issue. It's, you know, that we could help out. I don't know.
So I, I think you're right about that. I mean, the pool, one of the things that I noticed on the slides that V had was that for all of Massachusetts, the percentage is nine percent. But all of Massachusetts' school systems aren't as diverse as ours. So I think that we have to look at school systems where there is maybe a more attention paid to diversity. And in those particular cases, there are some best practices. We've tried to replicate many of those best practices. I mean, there, there is a population out there who want to be in, you know, a diverse school. So I think that it really is, you know, not just, I mean, it's very, we've tried and we had a conversation, I think it was last year at one of our system line meetings about, you know, is there a way that we encourage inside our system students to take on, you know, teaching as a profession or be inspired to do into that and maybe they would come back to us? And I know that, if I'm not mistaken, sometimes we've been successful at that. However, you know, that's, that's one of the avenues. And so what we have to do is actually look to those best practices. And I would say that for districts that do do that, they are above nine percent and, because that's just the average across. And I think there's another question you had about the sports piece. And I don't know, Chris, if you want to, or Cynthia?
Well, we, we were actively involved with the athletic director in reaching out to the various town sports and traveling and so forth. And we're very impressed by the amount of energy and seriousness with which he took the topic. And we're hoping to see that coming, you know, coming around again with the new athletic director. But in talking- But in talking about this topic among ourselves, I forget who it was that, at the meeting, and what town that they were speaking about, but they said that for, in that town, all of the signup notices, we'd go home with the backpacks. So it was kind of institutionalized, that notice goes up, you know, and it doesn't depend on whether or not you get the Milton Times necessarily, or you happen to see the signup six months ahead of when the sport actually starts, or that you know that you have to take off from work to get the kids signed up for football several, that's going to happen several months later. I mean, there's a lot of in-crowd kind of information that, and you, you can't really offset that dynamic just by person-to-person stuff, I think there needs to be an institutionalized response, and that requires the cooperation of those leagues. But we've talked about the system-wide meetings tonight, and the next system-wide meeting after tomorrow is focusing on this, and Mary has, Superintendent Gormly, has taken the initiative to say, I will contact all these town sports coordinators and invite them to come to the meeting, and, you know, we'll get the conversation going. So I think with that kind of initiative coming from the schools, you know, with our support, and hopefully with the cooperation of the local leagues, we can get something going.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'd like to just address one of the things you mentioned about the, the small amount of teachers of color who are in the program. I believe that you don't need to have teachers in the, in the buildings to represent people of color. I think there are ways of getting, you know, the administrative assistants, the janitors, the people in the cafeterias, the aides, they don't necessarily need the higher qualifications, but those people are important. I was telling these guys the other day, I remember my lunch ladies from elementary school like it was yesterday, you know, they meant something to me. And I can see, I can see somebody who is new to the, to the town, to the school, walking into the office to sign up their child, and seeing a person of color in there, that speaks volumes, you know? They may not meet the principal for a long time, but to see somebody there every day, or to be a child going in and giving their sick notice, or absentee note, or whatever, all of those things are important, you know, just to see faces, and, and that doesn't take somebody who has a degree in education. So I think we could, we as a town, as a school system, could work harder on getting that done.
Yeah, that's a good point, excellent.
Mr. Sullivan.
Just have a question about the athletics. So I've noticed, like, you have the grand total of everything. For the past few years, have you noticed any fluctuation in the difference between other percentages of races involved in each sport for fall, winter, and spring? So, because obviously the population's going to fluctuate every year, more come in, more come out, so have you noticed any, any differences between them?
So I can speak to this. Actually, we've only started collecting this data for the past two years, so I can't really say as to the pattern of fluctuation, I'm sure that might be, but if you look at the number of sports who, that are thirty percent or more diverse, they are pretty much the same sports as last year. So make what you will of that conclusion, we're going to continue tracking this data for years to come, so we'll have more information about whether it fluctuate each year.
The other piece that I would say on the data, one of the things that we had speculated on was that maybe some students don't have the prerequisites to do some of these sports. But if you note that some of the sports that have low representation are adjacent to ones that are very similar, and so, you know, and I don't know if I see it here, but, you know, track and field, for example, was on the list with high representation. Cross-country, though, on the opposite side, has very low representation. So clearly, you know, there's, you know, you would think that they would be some, so what's going on there, because they're adjacent? The swimming had very high representation, but crew did not. So I don't know what, what we talked about is, you know, let's have some conversations with the athletic directors, because maybe it is something that's around recruitment or perception of things. You know, we all know that students, you know, make decisions sometimes in what appears to be a random pace, but also sometimes they're, they're picking up on cues that this is a sport that's not for me. And so, you know, I would argue that sometimes these skill, you know, the skills are there clearly, because you look at some of the other pieces, you know, you look at lacrosse, but you look at, at, and I forgot which one there was, the other one, which maybe was field hockey. People, I mean, lacrosse is, is a very different sport, but it is a sport that I would argue probably has come up pretty fast over the last, you know, fifteen years or so. And so, interesting that that particular sport has, you know, good representation, other field sports do not, so.
What's working there?
What's working.
You know, what's working, and you build on that, right?
Yeah, because that's a good story.
I would just say too, I think, I mean, again, to reiterate what I said before, I think what's important about this data is not, is what these teams look like and who's participating in them, but it's also kids' connection to the school, right? It's being involved in something, and what makes them thrive in school, thrive and succeed.
Mr. Jett.
Sorry, I can't like return, I think it's a great thing to look at it, but I want you to think about this in baseball, we talked about baseball last night.
James, can we just, can we get a, can we get a mic?
V, you want to give?
Our coaches. Our coaches and our athletic directors, once they get to the high school, is a small piece of this puzzle. It really has to start early on, and, and I say this, if you look at the sports, you're talking about, this summer, you just had your first person of color in the Olympics for swimming. You look at last night, the first African-American to play in the World Series for the Cubs for the first time, the Major League Baseball has been around forever. So when you talk about these programs, we really need to, as you say, you have to start at the grassroots and give them exposure. And in terms of our cross-country, in our track, some people look at it as one and the same, and some people don't, it's just a different event, they're running long distance as opposed to short distance high jump. So when you talk about track, you got high jump, you got long jump, you, you have so many different events. So I caution people, then some of the sports that are highly representative are sports that don't get cut. They don't cut players, you know, like football, anyone could go off of football and you could, you could play. Wrestling, anyone could go off of wrestling and you could participate. When you start getting into sports that require cuts, cuts, that's where, at the high school level, when you're competing to win, that's where the talent rises, and, and you have to, as, if we're going to say, kids can't wake up in the ninth and tenth grade and go into AP, we have to say the same thing about athletics and our sports, so they have to get that early exposure and work on the talent. So I, I just put that out there, same thing with hockey. I don't watch hockey that much, outside of high school hockey, but I guarantee you that you probably don't have more than ten people in the National Hockey League that are people of color. Again, so it's not just Milton High School, it's the collegiate level, it's the professional level, but more importantly, it starts at the grassroots and what they, what children are exposed to.
So I just, I, I definitely think, you know, exposure at the elementary level is going to, is going to make all, all the difference and all the change, and, you know? And the other, the other thing too, is that cross, at the time, I think, the cross-country's a winter sport, am I right? And so.
No, it's fall.
Is it fall? I thought it was winter.
No, it's over now.
What, indoor track is there? Yeah. Sometimes it, you know, it is one of those things that if certain people of color, you know, do play one sport, it's, it simultaneously is that other one, and that's the one they prefer, so that's why there's less, you know, it, it, there's a bunch of different things on that, that too, but.
I think, I mean, good point. It's the kind of question that we want to look at.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We don't know, we don't understand all of what's going on here, so we're not saying, this is, this is what to do.
No, no, no.
Let's figure it out.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and key point again, to what Mr. Jett was saying, is figuring it out with the local team, with the town team.
And professional development to me is important, because I feel like everybody needs to be on the same page, and if some people are walking in with no idea about the importance of diversity and kids of color who may need to, you know, increase confidence or whatever in a sport, if, if all they're doing is doing their feeder system since they were young, you know, they need to have some education about that.
Just, overall, we're talking about sports here, and I can imagine people saying, what, why are we talking about sports? You know, I'm talking about staffing. I think all of these topics contribute to high-quality education for all kids. These are not individual things or anything. This is all about making sure schools are working for all the kids.
Well said.
Well, I have a million things I'd like to say, but I will consotherize, then I could come to your meeting, that would be, but I, I got the invitation, so thank you. But there's particularly around the two, the two issues that caught my attention are the ones about the AP exams and the achievement gap between students of color and the qualifying score, and so I'm wondering, when you look at longitudinal data, if you look at the length of time that those students have been educated in the Milton public schools, and if you look at that, I mean, if you can look at that over time, I'd be curious to see how long have those students that are taking those AP exams been part of our school system and part of, you know, part of the education of the entirety in the Milton public schools? And when you look at the French immersion in the first grade, do you look at, so when you're in kindergarten, and you look at the students that are choosing French immersion, what is the population of students, of students of color that choose French immersion? And then when you look, because you know French immersion is a limited choice time, and then as the population grows over time, more students of color or more students are coming into the system, and that's going to skew the numbers, it's going to make the numbers look different. But I'd be really curious to see, in the kindergarten, how many of those are children of color, and then how many of those students choose the French the first time around? Because that's the problem with that, but the problem with that is that you won't, you have one week to make that decision, and then that's it. And you don't get to make that decision again. Perhaps sometimes you do, if you speak French as a language that you speak at home, so that, for me, that'd be, that would be a powerful question to ask about that particular piece. And then if you don't come to kindergarten in the Milton public schools, whether that affects your ability to choose French, because that, on the hierarchy of lists, that's at the bottom. So, because those two things are very powerful and they're really important, but I think that it's really important to think about that piece as the district grows in diversity through the grade levels, to look at the program fairly that way. And so that's great data for you to, for you to mine, and figure out, just another thing to put on your plate. And, and also about the qualifying exams, I'd be, I'm just kind of curious about preparation in terms of that. If you're going to, if you're looking at qualifying exams, how long have those students, what are the classes they took before, how long have they been in our system, where did they come from? I'm just kind of curious about that.
Where would that lead you?
Well, that would lead you to figure, it would give you a sense of the quality, like, of this education itself, because how well you score on AP exams, you don't pop out ready to take an AP exam, right? They're rigorous, hard courses, so what classes have you taken before to prepare you for those classes? Right? You can enroll, that's totally true, but what have you taken before to prepare you for them, in order to achieve that qualifying score?
When you're in the system, you're on.
Say what?
Once they're in your system.
Yes, of course.
And so you expect that even in, each cohort or subgroup is going to be represented proportionally.
Correct.
So I, I think it's an interesting question, but I'm not sure with respect to the AP piece.
Right.
So, Mr. Sullivan, then Superintendent Gormly, and then Ms. Varela.
Mine's off the topic of this discussion, it's more of going back to athletics. So for the cross-country, I, I know for boys, I'm on the cross-country team, and I know that it's, it's, it's long distance, and then when it comes to indoor track and outdoor track, when the different percentages of races change, it's because usually there's a same, relatively, there's a same number group of people of, in Milton High that do a sport. And it changes throughout the seasons, because some only do one or two, and some do all three. But the point I'm trying to get across here is that other sports that have a high diversity population take away from other sports that don't, because there can only be a certain amount of people who do sports. And so not all of them can be diverse, because more will be diverse than others. And that's why the difference between the running, cross-country, indoor track, and outdoor track.
So I'd like Mr. Sullivan to describe, take my question, and talk about the calculus part, that was excellent. With the achievement in the AP, James is going to speak when he does his data, but again, we're putting programs in, rising eighth graders are being pre-taught every summer, so that they achieve in calculus, they're being tutored after school. So Principal Jett will talk to programs that we're putting in place, again, programs that cost a tremendous amount of money, but are research-based, so that we see the numbers and we're putting, and again, you all now understand, you don't wake up in the eleventh grade and do this, identifying children at the middle school, Dr. Spalding's working, raising the bar at the middle school, identifying these rising eighth graders, so that they're given the supports to achieve, and that we can increase the number so that all of our students are, achieve at the same level. But James will describe that during his presentation tonight. Or Mr. Sullivan could have done a better job than Ms. Gormly could have.
Ms. Varela.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to commend Ms. Everhart on the, on that, that strand piece about French immersion, because that, that is so key, you know, you know, if you don't take French immersion starting in first grade, then you're not going to be part, you're not going to be part of it. So that's a huge piece about how many students of color from kindergarten, that start here in kindergarten, and, or just move here for first grade and choose it, because that's a huge piece, because if you come in in third grade, fourth grade, or fifth grade, whether you're a person of color or not, you can't be in that French immersion program unless you are a native speaker from a French-speaking, they can test you in, but that percentage is very low. It's either you start in first grade, or, you know, there's a small percentage that come in, so that, that's a huge explanation for that piece. And then, and then also to echo, echo what she said, that I, I think, again, to defend the system as a whole, that if someone comes into the system in sixth grade, even though Dr. Spalding, whatever, everyone works extremely hard, it, it's more, it's interesting to follow a student from first kindergarten, really, here, and, and, and how well they do, as opposed to being transferred, so if they have five years at another place, of another district that's not as stellar as, you know, Milton is, that, that's, that's a gap to be made up too. I mean, that's, that's an area, so it's, it's, it's interesting to see that breakdown, that it's real, I didn't, those are really good crucial points that Ms. Everhart brings up, yeah.
Um, I guess you'd have to look at the data, I'm not sure we do have any data that there's any shift in the racial breakdown of the population, that there, it sounds like there might be a thought that there's more students of color coming in at an older age. I don't know that there, that that is the case.
Yeah. I'm just talking about French.
I would just go back to, you know, the point of like, that, you know, once you're in, once they're in our system, there are students, and I, I think what you can look at is kind of what some of the, you know, as I said before, I think some of the enrollment in different classes, and sort of what, what opportunities are there for people, what, what students are encouraged to go into, what, you know, what choices that people are making, and sort of the preparation all, all the way along, so, but I, I don't know that the data bears that out.
No, I'm just talking about French, in terms of like, when you look at the numbers.
French might be a different issue, but than the, than the AP. French might be a different issue, but than the, um, than the AP and SAT, of course.
So just a few closing points. Um, the first is that we, we really appreciate your partnership. Uh, again, this is a community where, uh, I think everyone cares about diversity. And, and you serving in the role that you do is, is an important part of, uh, making sure that we grow as a community. So we appreciate that. The second thing is that, um, Tvee and the superintendent and her team, I, I think we would all agree that this is an extraordinarily comprehensive presentation of data. So it makes the discussion that we all want to have a lot richer, um, because of that. It, it touches on just about every single important aspect that you could think of with regard to diversity. So I, I think, for me, the takeaways are, um, with regard to, we, we have some considerable work to do, I think, in the diversity of our teaching staff. Uh, and I wouldn't, it, it, there are a couple of reasons why I don't think we should pay, um, as much attention to the national statistics as, uh, some other districts might have to. The first is that we live in a part of the country that is, um, dense with schools of education. Uh, the second, that, which therefore means that, um, proportionally, yes, the number, let's assume the number nationally is nine percent of, uh, people of color going into education, but proportionally, more of them are going to be here in this part of the country than most other places. Um, the second point is that, and this is always what you think about when you're trying to do recruiting, um, it's a sales job. And we have a high-performing district. We have a diverse community. We have a competitive pay scale. So the product that we have to sell is actually pretty impressive. Um, it's going to take more than traditional recruitment methods, but that's always the case when you're trying to recruit high-quality people of color. Because guess what? They're recogni- we're not the first ones to recognize that. We have to go get them. Um, the, the last point is that when we think about recruitment, we also have to think about retention. And as we've hired some, uh, teachers of color, sometimes we haven't kept them. Sometimes because it didn't work out, sometimes because they might have gone elsewhere. But you have to look at both ends. If, if you're, um, hiring more and losing more, then you don't get anywhere. So on, on the recruitment point, that I think those are some things we need to focus on. Uh, while I would agree that, um, there are other positions in the system that are opportunities, aides, custodians, lunch ladies, I, I think the, if we look at the data, at least at the elementary level, most of our teachers of color are concentrated in one elementary school. I, I don't think any of us think that's, thinks that's a good thing. I think that, um, I think we all agree that having all of our students experience a more diverse teaching staff is a good thing. So we have to figure out a way to get at that. Um, so I, I think we've got a lot of work to do on the, the, the teaching staff front. I think, um, we've, we've talked a lot about athletics. The only thing I would say about that is, um, and I think a number of us have said it, the presentation that Larry Rooney and James Jett did for us three years ago now, regarding outreach strategies, was excellent. So I just think, I mean, we, we don't need to recreate the wheel here, we just need to start to execute on that. Um, the, 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 the crisis for me was, um, the SAT data. If you look at the performance of African-American students and the gap in each of the areas, so writing, reading, uh, math, the, the gap is anywhere from seventy-five to eighty-five points, and it does not get better. That, that gap is consistent across the years. That's a very big deal in terms of college admissions. Seventy-five to eighty-five points on the SAT is a big deal. So I, I think, uh, the question is, and, and we are going to talk about this in the next presentation, but it, but it requires a much more detailed discussion. Are we, are we doing the right things or do we need different strategies? Because if you look at that data, it suggests that, um, there is an improvement, which, which is also striking, because if you look at the MCAS data at the high school for students of color, it is actually pretty good. So I, I don't understand why there's this consistent gap here, but we have to figure that out. So thank you, um, more to follow. Stay tuned. We'll, we'll have you back for a follow-up discussion, but, um, we have a lot to talk about, I think, as a school committee.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
See you tomorrow, one thirty, library.
Um, may we have V remain and all of our administrators join us at the table?
I don't think I have anything tomorrow. Oh, no. I can be here at one thirty, so tomorrow.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes. I love that. He's very, very sweet. Oh, my goodness, yes. I know nothing. Like Ella, like very.
Do we have any time adaptations?
No, no, actually no.
Any what?
Time adaptations to the agenda?
What, what do you mean?
Like, it's ten o'clock and we still have a ton to go through.
Yeah? What do you, what do you suggest?
So I'm just wondering, do strategic planning and policy tonight?
Uh, we have to do policy.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you for coming, being in attendance, such a good audience. Um, I think that, uh, what you heard tonight is the lives that you all lead, and all of you could have been at the table with CDM, so I appreciate this tonight. Um, quickly for the viewing audience who might just tune in, would you go around and identify yourselves? And then I'm going to turn it over to you.
James Jett, Principal of Milton High School.
You might want to pass the mic, just so that the viewing audience can connect your names with your faces.
Thank you.
James Jett, Principal of Milton High School.
Thank you.
Vivu DeGueye.
Kat Deroche, Elementary Coordinator at Tucker.
Nina McNeil, High, Principal of Tucker.
Karen Spalding, Principal of Pierce Middle School.
Meredith Kemp, Curriculum Coordinator, Glover School.
Karen McDavitt, Principal of Glover Elementary School.
Jonathan Redden, Principal of Cunningham Elementary School.
Amy Gale, Curriculum Coordinator for Cunningham and Collicott Elementary Schools.
And I'm Holly Concanon, Principal of the Collicott School.
So again, thank you very much, uh, this late night and the days that you put in. Um, what is your pleasure and who wants to start?
Which, what do you want to feed?
Um, so it's called the fifteen, sixteen MCAS PARC cohort analysis.
So the school committee has all these presentations. They look at this one.
So, uh, one of the reasons we're back tonight is at the request of the school committee for a follow-up, um, to look at specifically at cohort analysis and to give the principals a chance to speak to their own school's data. So I'm going to respect, I'm going to try to respect the, um, principals being here by, being really quick with my slides to set up the context for what the principals will talk about.
So V, I think it's important for you to say, you're here tonight and you're doing this presentation in response to the last time you were here, and the school committee asked for this particular presentation.
Right. Um, so this is, uh, looking at the one cohort. So this is the current, uh, grade twelve students in our school system and tracking their scores back to when they were third graders, um, in ELA, math, and science. And you can kind of see the, um, so the top left is the ELA slide. Um, and the blue line is the CPI, um, the composite performance index. And like we said last time, the CPI represents the overall performance of all students in that cohort for that year. Um, and then the red line that you see here is the percent proficient and above. And then the, the purple line is, um, the growth score, so the median SGP for that cohort. And as you can see, in ELA, in third grade, you see that the students, um, so for this cohort, the students started, um, in third grade at sixty-three percent, um, proficient or above. And by the time they go through our school system, you can see the increases every year. So in, as fourth grader, they were sixty-five percent proficient or above. As fifth grader, they were seventy-nine percent. Um, sixth grader, seventy-nine, eighty-five, eighty-six. And as tenth grader, they were ninety-seven percent proficient or above. And this trend is, uh, very prevalent for most of our cohorts, um, going through the, the Milton Public School system. And on the right side, you see the math slide. Um, so in third grade, students were at about sixty-eight percent proficient or above. Then it became sixty percent in fourth grade, then seventy-one in fifth, seventy-two in sixth, sixty-eight in seventh, seventy-one in eighth, and then ninety percent proficient or above by the time they took the tenth grade MCAS. Um, and the story with growth is that it, it pretty much stays between the expected range of growth, between forty and sixty, um, median SGP. So that's how it goes. And then with science, you see that there is, um, you know, it's, it starts off around sixty percent, um, proficient or above in fifth grade. Then the students take the MCAS again in eighth grade, and you see that there's a slight dip. And then by the time they take the, the grade ten science MCAS, they're back up again at eighty-six percent proficient or above. And you can kind of see this pattern repeating with other cohorts of students. So this is, the next cohort is the current eleventh graders in our school system. And this is what their data looks like going from third grade through, um, through tenth grade. And for ELA, you can kind of see a, a similar, um, increase between third grade and tenth grade. It kind of steadily increases every year. Um, it, with the math, for this cohort in particular, the pattern is a little bit more, um, pronounced than the last one, the last cohort. You know, it kind of doesn't have that big of a dip in fourth grade. This one, the dip is more pronounced in fourth grade. And then you see the dip again in seventh grade and eighth grade. And this is actually pretty typical of what happens in math at the state level as well. So you see this dip, it's a developmental thing for students in math, fourth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. The math topics that they are, um, exposed to are just much more challenging than what they had been doing before. But then once they, they, uh, master those concepts, then they can, uh, you see the increase in their achievement again. Um, so for, for this current cohort, in science, you see they start out with sixty-one percent, um, proficient or above in fifth grade. And they, uh, you, and you see the dip in eighth grade again, but this dip is actually less pronounced than the previous cohort. So the previous cohort, when they were in eighth grade, they were forty-one percent proficient or above. For this cohort, it was forty-eight percent. Um, and then by the time they, they become tenth graders, they're at eighty-eight percent proficient or above. Um, and then I'll show you one more sample. So this is the current tenth grader. So this cohort of kids has not taken the tenth grade MCAS yet. They're going to do that this year. Um, but if you see, uh, kind of their data, the pattern looks a little bit different than the previous two. And one of the reason for that is because this is the first cohort that took the PARC in, in grade eight. So you see, um, that dip in, in ELA. Um, the red line kind of dipped down in eighth grade. That's the first year of PARC.
I think so.
And then in math, you see, um, a similar pattern before, where you see a dip in grade four and a dip in grade seven, and then it starts going back up. Um, and the science, we don't have the data for, for grade ten science yet, so. But the dip in grade eight is actually even less pronounced than the previous cohort. So we're seeing that our science instruction for, um, eighth graders for the middle school is paying off because cohort after cohort, and these are consecutive cohorts, it's improving. And this is taking a look at the elementary cohort. So these are our current sixth graders and how they did at each of the, the four elementary schools in third, fourth, and fifth grade. So this is, um, the data for ELA. Um, so this cohort actually had a transition, um, two years ago. So in fourteen, fifteen, they, they took PARC, um, and fifteen and sixteen, they took PARC too. Um, so the pattern between third grade and fifth grade looks different, um, than when you see, when it was just all MCAS. When it was all MCAS, you see the pattern consistently going, increasing every year from third grade to fifth grade. Um, but with this cohort, between third and fifth, you can't see that pattern so much. And this is a result of, you know, a new test in place. Um, we don't know what the pattern is going to bear out. It's going to have to take time for us to see what that, the, the patterns will actually be like. Um, but this is what it looks like for now. And, so that's what I just. And similarly with math, um, you see that the pattern doesn't really match the pattern when it was just all MCAS. So we'll just kind of have to wait and see what the, the, the pattern will be, um, with a couple more years of data.
V, the, a question that I was struck by as I started to work through all of this is, does it, does it even make sense to put PARC and MCAS side by side? I mean, it, it, there seems to be such a comparison difference that I'm not sure if it, if, if it helps or hurts to have them longitudinally, since they're very different exams. Um, they, arguably, they're testing somewhat different things. What's your thought about that?
Well, and to extend that point even further, this year, we are going to have MCAS two point oh, which is a combination of the old MCAS and PARC and new items. So it's going to be a different test as well. Um, so, I mean, it's really, the, the value of this data is really just to show you what the, the state is measuring. But in terms of the interpretation and what it means for our school system and our instructional practices, I think that work has to be dependent on us to make the interpretation and then subsequent actions that we want to take and, and how much weight we want to give to this transitional data as well.
Good answer.
So this is the science MCAS score for the current sixth grader. And they only take science as fifth graders, so we don't really have previous years of science data. This is what it is. So I did want to talk a little bit about the achievement gap, um, looking at, as a cohort analysis. I show you the achievement gap, um, at the last presentation, bench, benchmarking year to year, what grade three is from year one to year two, year three. So this is taking a look, following the same group of students from year to year and looking at the gap data. So with the elementary cohort, um, and as I said before, you know, some of these subgroups are too small in each of our individual elementary schools to really report data out on. So what I did here is combine all the elementary school and really just took a district look at all the elementary schools together and at the subgroups, so that we have actually enough data to report out on. Um, and this is what the gap looks like for ELA in math. And, you know, for students with disability in third grade ELA, their CPI gap between students with disability and students, um, with no disability was thirty-one, uh, thirty point one, um, CPI gap point. As grade four students. As grade four students, that gap was thirty-four CPI points. But then by the time they became fifth graders, that gap is closing down to twenty-three point six CPI point. So you can kind of see for ELA, there's a pattern of, for following the cohort of the gap closing across all of our subgroups. For math, the picture is a little bit different. And maybe some of the, the principals and curriculum coordinators here can speak to why there's a difference between maybe ELA and math performance when they do that presentation. But you, you don't see that consistent direction of the gap closing as much. It's kind of a, a variation with the student with disabilities. There's really no change in the, the, in the CPI gap. With respect to African-American black students, the gap is closing. But with respect to economically disadvantaged students, it seems to be increasing. So there, it's really mixed results with math. So in the middle school cohort, so following the current ninth grader, looking back, that there's the ELA and math scores at sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, you kind of see the same pattern as in the elementary cohort in that ELA, all the gaps are closing. And in math, it's kind of, again, mixed, mixed results. And there might be an explanation for that in, in one of these subsequent presentations with the principal. That is the data we have for now. And then I want to talk a little bit about just overall next steps that we as a district are, is going to take based on this data. So the first step is that our, our district has taken up a much more robust, data-driven approach to curriculum work. And that's evident not only in kind of the, the data work that I have been sharing with you, but also in the fact that this is the first year that all teachers in elementary and middle schools were provided with data within the first month of school on who the students are in, in front of them, what their internal assessment data was from the previous year, what their state assessment data was, so that teachers from the get-go have an idea of who's sitting in front of them, and they can kind of organize their instructional practices right away to differentiate for different groupings of students. And I know that, that has been very helpful for some teacher just to get acquainted with their classroom. So there's definitely, and, and I'm sure the principals will, will tell you about this in much more detail than I can, but there's definitely a culture shift around using data to identify learning needs and, and strategies to address the needs of particular students. So because teachers, all teachers have ready access to those documents where the input assessment data, internal data, and now there's also state assessment data on it, there's a triangulation of data when, when teachers are talking about the needs of students. So it's, it's very data-driven, it's very evidence-based. There's no more, you know, like, I know that that student was not doing well in my class because of this, this story that I've heard about the student from previous teachers or from other sources. It's now really rooted in the data. You can pull the document up and you can see how the students have performed on these various measures. And the second thing that we do every year is we really try to refine our common assessments to align with new standards and state expectations. So as you've witnessed, you know, standards can change. And our PD and our common assessments have to change along with that, reflect what's the newest update in, in the state. So this year, we're piloting new writing assessment in elementary schools. We're offering teachers a chance to do a PD on new science standards that the state just adopted and ratified this summer. So everything is really new and fresh, and we're giving our teachers an opportunity to get on the forefront of that. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is just the ability to have common planning time at all levels is really going to be tremendous, especially at the elementary level. Because this is really the first year that teachers and principals and coordinators are able to come together and focus their work on, on, on curriculum and instruction and on student needs and be able to discuss that. Not just, you know, between the individual classroom teacher and the coordinators and the principal who might be able to pop into that room. But now they have a chance to sit down with their whole grade level team and talk about those issues together. So we're really hopeful that that will drive a lot of progress in our drive to, to close the achievement gap. So I'm going to let these guys tell you more about what's happening in their school. Before that, again, any quick questions?
No, but could I just say, thank you. You know I'm not a data person, and you always make it come alive even at ten fifteen.
Yeah, I was. James has volunteered to go first, so we'll go high school, middle school.
I was just going to follow up on Ms. Bagley Jones' comment. I always get a smile on my face when you're here because you not only present the data, you know, beautifully in your charts and whatever, but you explain it so clearly and thoroughly. And I know that the people watching this are also appreciative of it. I, the first time you gave us a presentation, I said to Superintendent Gordon Lee, she's a keeper.
So I'm here this evening, again, James Jett, I'm here this evening to present some information on the high schools MCAS data. We talk about the highlights by subject, data-driven areas for improvement. We'll talk about what worked and what are some of the next steps. And I think that you see that from all of the presentations. The first thing I want to bring to your attention is that high school has maintained a very high level of performance, maintaining a CPI of ninety-five or better in all three categories. Grade ten STE, which is the science, technology, and engineering, grade ten ELA, and the math, that is something that we're very proud of, and that's been something that's been very consistent over the last five years. By science, the number of students scored in advance or proficient in science, eighty-nine percent in two thousand and fifteen, that increased to ninety-four percent in two thousand and sixteen. So on the flip side of that, we decreased the number of students in needs improvement from eight percent in two thousand and fifteen to four percent last year, two thousand and sixteen, indicating that we're still moving more and more students to proficient in advance. And as I alluded to at the top, the CPI for the science in two thousand and sixteen was ninety-six point one. If you have a CPI of a hundred, that means all of your students in that category or in that test have moved into proficient in advance. So we're very proud of that, especially knowing that the science standards have been evolving year after year after year. So we're very pleased with that. When we get to our math highlights, ninety percent of our students scored advanced or proficient in the MCAS in grade ten. This is almost similar to what it was in previous years, but it is important to note, now we have seventy-three percent of our, our students in the advanced category. Our CPI score for math, ninety-six point four. Once again, the highest you could get is a hundred. And the median growth for all of our students is still over fifty percent. I, I mean, I actually think the accurate CPI was fifty-two, even with our high achievement on our math scores. And for ELA, English language arts, our CPI was ninety-nine point one. Once again, really doing some excellent work here at the high school. Ninety-six percent of our students proficient in advance. And the median growth percentile was forty-six, still within the average range of forty to sixty. So areas of improvement. This year, we did get some points for closing the gap with our students, special needs, but we're still falling short with our high needs, economically disadvantaged students, and our African-American black students in ELA, math, and science. However, if you were to look over a seven-year pattern, that gap is still closing, but we have these small peaks and valleys as we continue to move forward. We want to continue to move our students from needs improvement to proficient and from proficient to advanced. That is very important for us. We don't want to rest by just saying ninety-six or ninety-seven percent. Ideally, it would be appealing if we got everybody into the advanced category. What are some of the things that work? Academic merit is a, is a common assessment that we implemented a couple of years ago with the help and support of a Milton resident and parent, Steve Shapiro. He worked very closely with Barbara Wright, our humanities director, to provide common assessments here with our English and history, with a focus area on, on nonfiction and informational texts. Informational texts are texts that our students are picking up, social media, smartphone applications, magazines, and things like that. That assesses their prior knowledge, but it's also given them more information on things that they did not know. ELA foundations. I emphasized this the last time I was here. We had a reading specialist last year. I'm proud to say every student that was with the reading specialist last year who took the test actually passed the test at ELA. But we no longer have that reading specialist. No longer have the reading specialist here, so that'd be something if we could look forward to adding. In all seriousness, I think that this individual did some wonderful work. Some of our students have won, you know, small awards in terms of their writing, enhancing their writing, so that was huge for us. The calculus project, I put that up there for a couple of reasons. And I had no idea that school committee chairman Roy Walker was going to bring this up. When you talk about closing the achievement gap, you're talking about the disparity in our SAT scores. The calculus project was something that was put into place to enhance that, but it takes time. So three years ago, and we're on our third cohort cohort. Three years ago, a gentleman, Dr. Mims from Boston College, a doctoral student, spoke with me at Boston College, then came here and worked with Dr. Spalding, Courtney Miller, who I think deserves a lot of credit to help us get this off the ground. Now Michelle Cruz is taking a baton and running with it. But the calculus project is a, a program that pre-teaches students in the area of math. And what it does is it helps enhance their content knowledge, their skill, problem-solving abilities, critical thinking, and more importantly, building their confidence. And through that, we hope that those kids will come up and they do better on the MCAS test, which we hope that net good results this year, and better on SATs. The ultimate goal is to get them to achieve or go on that trajectory to take and pass a calculus course, which is one of the predictors for success at the collegiate level. So that is a program that we're excited about. We think the advancement initiatives, the school committee, and central office were supporting that. Even though we fell short, we're still seeking funds to try to keep this program going. So we're excited about that. Math support, this is to support students currently in, in our math in course one, two, and three, which is a combination of algebra, geometry, and statistics. So we provide students with that support, and our students are making significant gains there as well, as you can see by the overall scores that we have in our area. Targeted performance-based review in English, math, and science. We did start a program last year, it was called Sophomore Scholars. Last year, we had a group of sophomores that were really having a tough time meeting the needs. We implemented that. I need to say, we need to retweet that, we need to tweak that a little bit to make it a little bit better, to make sure the kids support it. But again, we're giving them targeted instruction in each of those areas. And then one of the things we're most proud of is our early administration of the biology final exam. We do the mid-year exam, then we do the final exam at the tail end of May. It gives us a couple of weeks that we identify some of the strengths, but more importantly, some of the areas that our kids are having weaknesses on. And then we try to bolster it up or backfill it within a couple of weeks before they take the, the exam, and our students took guns very well in, in that area. Here we talk about the, the science curriculum materials and professional development. We were very fortunate, this past year, Amy Tom worked very hard putting together a proposal that was supported by the advancement initiative. So we're looking for some great gains there in terms of our curriculum, in terms of professional development, and, and some of the supplies and materials that our kids are, we're now putting the science in their hands and letting them explore with the materials. Our bridge program, again, this is another program that I think is working towards closing the achievement gap. The bridge program was set up several years ago, started at the middle school because we knew students were rising, moving in, rising ninth graders. Yes, they passed the eighth grade, but they were barely passing or needed some additional support and motivation. That was a program, again, Superintendent Gordon Lee supported, and we worked with it, providing, back then it was just math and English. Now it has grown to be math, English, science, and some skills. And we also bring in speakers to the students so they can identify with other individuals who may have had struggles, may have had challenges or barriers in their middle school or high school careers, but then now they're flying and they're being successful in their current positions. The CO-TAW, the college prep course in math, English, math, and science, this is the area I'm going to talk about in some of the slides to follow. We still need some professional development in there. We want to believe that all of our teachers are great teachers. We're trying to get two teachers to really partner up. Both teachers own the curriculum, both teachers are working in concert at all times. There's a challenge. We can't just put them in there and say, okay, you go through a whole year without the support. We need to provide them additional support there. And we also have math, MCAS support classes. Now that we have the data for the second part of the year, we need the kids that are in the lower end of needs improvement, and we have very few that are not making the mark, they get an MCAS support class or an English support class to help them so they can get over that hurdle and achieve that proficient so they can get their high student form as well. Next step. You heard a lot about Milton being a level, Milton High School being a level two school. It's not, if you go back to the performances of advanced and proficient, you go back to our CPI, it's not because of the academics, it's because of participation. So it's our job as the administrators and guidance counselors, and I'm going to throw adjustment counselors in there, to make sure that we're monitoring enrollment, we're also identifying and supporting students. When we look at the scores, and hopefully my colleagues will talk about it, when we say students in special needs are not making the mark, or the students with disabilities, they're not just cognitive disabilities, they're social emotional disabilities, whether it's anxiety, whether it's depression, all of those things that we need to support the whole job with. And so we are talking about providing the social emotions. We talked about a transition program. We have students that have a difficult time just navigating their debt after a long illness, experience about a depression, anxiety, sometimes eating disorders, they kind of impact the way that they perform. So we're looking to hopefully gain a teacher in a social worker slash therapist to work with our students to make sure that we're meeting their social emotional needs and help them with that. By that, we're hopeful that every single student at the time of the test will be available to take the test with a solid mind, willing and openness to take that test and be successful. I talked about enhancing the professional development for our CO-TAW teachers, that is huge. And the, the one at the bottom, the seeking alternatives for running a full review scheduled at MCAS. We paid for our bridge program with money that we got back from the state. They have since cut that. It was five thousand dollars, we took a thousand dollars off because some of that five thousand dollars was to support snacks and things like that. But we're looking for the beer bones to say, hey, we just want to be able to at least provide, at least provide the instructional staff and the support, and then hopefully we can work with Jackie Morgan, food services and, and gain food and snacks and supplies that way. Unless, of course, there's a donor or someone else that is willing to support us with that, we'll always take that as well. Use our common planning time to assess common assessments and lab investigations. Michelle Cruz, Amy Tom, Barbara Wright, they work together very closely in concert, not just on their own content areas, but after our leadership meetings, sometimes on Tuesdays, they, they get together and they, they expand on that in terms of curriculum opportunities. Continue to administer the biology exam. I talked about that, I think that that netted us great results on that. Implement new technology and updated curriculum across all science classrooms. We are very fortunate, we just made one thirty-three, room one thirty-three downstairs is a new engineering course. We, and it's a new engineering lab, movable tables, so this is our first year doing it. I don't have any data on that, but the students are excited about that. It's another opportunity to initiate some STEM courses for our students. And continue the vertical alignment with the elementary and middle school and some of the success that, success that they do. When I talked about what worked, I should say what worked, and you're going to hear what works from all of the principals and coordinators. We have great scores in We have great scores, and V highlighted that in terms of the, the cohort, you know, from grade three to grade twelve. I would love to say something was in the water in the teaching solely at middle and high school that they jumped, and they're very successful. The work that my colleagues are doing with their, their staff at the elementary level is just building that foundation, and kids' confidence, their skill level, their knowledge is getting better and better. So, I will say that works. I also say the work that Superintendent Goldie has implemented with, uh, the leadership of Dr. Dennis Slaughter and cultural competency. We talked about the racial makeup of the teachers. One of the things he said that really stuck with me in terms of teacher, it doesn't matter if it's a black one or a white one, as long as it's the right one. And so, I think we have a lot of right teachers in a, a lot of, uh, content areas, and we're not going to be able to fix that overnight because you only have so many openings each year, so we're going to continue to try, strive for that, but I think that was important to acknowledge. Implement, in, implementation of the new, uh, math curriculum for particularly our Course One and Three. Uh, Michelle Cruz has really done some investigation and looking at different textbooks and curriculums that we feel is going to push our students forward, so we're optimistic about that. And, uh, increase the use of online assessment component, uh, of the new math curriculum for re- for remediation and intervention. Kids could go on that, on their leisure and practice and practice and practice. I don't want to say it's like study island after middle school, but it gives them off it to me. Uh, and then looking at more evaluating, assessing the common assessments that we have on our data dashboard. Again, once again, V does a lot of the data for us. I, I, I'm, I say it all the time, I'm impressed with the work that she does, and I appreciate the work that she does, and I agree. She, she simplifies it and she brings it down to a level that you can understand it. And then, uh, continue to, uh, work with the department on inclusive teaching and practices and making mathematics accessible for all students here at the high school. So, um, again, I say that the high school data in, i- it's good. I think that they're performing at a high level, uh, but I also think that there's still work that we need to do, particularly in our subgroups, and, and making sure that we're not, uh, getting complacent. So, thank you. Questions for the high school? Wait until the end.
I don't see any questions. Proceed.
I, I, I have questions, but it's late, so I want to ask. Okay, so, um, for the Pierce Middle School, we'll follow a, a similar format, um, talk about some of the highlights, um, some of the areas for improvement, what worked, and next steps. Um, so the, the theme, um, for English Language Arts is that, um, although they were small steps in the right direction, they were steps in the right direction. We, um, at Pierce, when you look at the data for ELA over time, it's been fairly flat. Um, and so, what these highlight are some, again, small improvements, but definitely improvements, um, in the right direction, and especially around, um, some of our subgroups, what you saw in V's slide, overtime, um, for students grade six, following a cohort of students, um, what you see is the gaps closing for ELA. Math is a different story, but for ELA. Um, and so, we're especially proud of those SGPs for all subgroups, um, in particular, the multi-race non-Hispanic subgroup, um, which shifted by twenty-six points. Um, and again, just thinking in terms of student growth percentiles, um, you need to see at least a ten-point shift for it to be considered significant, linked to some, um, work. Um, and then again, when following the cohort, the achievement gaps for students, um, with disabilities, African-American, Black and subgroup, and economically disadvantaged, all decreased, um, from grade six to grade eight. So, for math, um, definitely some highlights in the theme of this slide, as you will notice that, um, most if not all are eighth-grade highlights, and I'll, I'll loop back to that a little bit later. Um, but the percentage, that first one in particular, the percentage of eighth-grade students, um, scoring Level Five, which is that, um, top level for PARC, increased by fourteen percent. And so, it's both when you look at the eighth graders, um, for the previous year, it increased by fourteen percent, and it also for the cohort increased by fourteen percent. In other words, when they were seventh graders, fourteen percent of them were in Level Five. As eighth graders, twenty-eight percent of them were Level Five. Um, and the CPI increasing from seventh grade to eighth grade, this, the student growth percentile, um, for students in the high-needs group was sixty-four. And again, just to sort of situate that, um, student growth percentile is expected for most students between forty and sixty, so once you go above sixty, um, that's something pretty impressive. Um, but most impressive on that slide, uh, is the student growth percentile for students with disability subgroup, again, for eighth-grade math, seventy-one point five for students with disabilities, which is, um, off the charts and incredibly impressive. That's compared to all students, which was fifty-three point five. So, those were sort of my favorite slides, but this is probably my most favorite slide, um, again. So, um, this is the data looking overtime, um, so if the question is, did the advancement budget purchase of science curriculum materials and dedicated, uh, leadership at the Pierce Middle School for Science, did it make a difference? That would be a yes. Um, so what you see overtime is the CPI going up. Um, we did want it to have gone up a little bit more from fifteen to sixteen. However, um, if you then jump down, um, to that last table of the percentage of students in Advanced overtime, because what CPI doesn't capture is shifting kids from proficient to Advanced, because you just get a hundred points whether the child is in proficient or Advanced. Um, and that went up to twelve percent, um, for two thousand and sixteen. And the state, just if you want a comparison, hovers right around about five percent. Um, and then finally, down at the bottom, again, another good news story, um, for the Students with Disabilities subgroup, that, um, twenty-five points, bonus points were earned for shifting that, that, um, that data. So, for areas for improvement, although there were some good news stories, um, for the Students with Disabilities subgroup, overall, it still remains the largest gap when you look at all of the subject areas, um, all of the grade levels. The closing of the achievement gaps, um, does not show that same clean, consistent pattern, um, in math as it does, um, ELA. Um, we're concerned about the low median student growth percentile for sixth grade. We do think that that has to do with the implementation of a brand-new curriculum, um, which we know implementation of curriculum takes, takes at least three years. But, so that's, that's what we're thinking, but we're keeping close eye on that. And then, that last one, achievement and growth for both the aggregate and subgroups, is not consistent by grade in mathematics. And so, what we see are these pockets of really amazing things happen, but they're pockets, they're not consistent, um, by grade level. So, we looked at, uh, compared our student growth percentiles for, um, some of our targeted interventions, um, to get a handle on whether or not those interventions, um, seem to have made a difference. And we saw a similar pattern, um, in terms of our reading specialist intervention to what we've seen in the past, and that is if students get reading intervention every day, um, it makes a big difference. If they get, um, reading intervention every other day, it does not make as much of a difference. Um, and we've, we've talked about that, um, in presentations before, and it has to do with the number of students we need to service and making, trying to make the best decisions about what, we have one reading specialist and, and the number of students who need intervention, and what level of intervention they might need. Pierce Academy, similar again to, um, past years, we're getting, um, mixed results, depending on the subject, depending on the grade level. Um, and you'll see in one of the next step slides that we have some thoughts about revising that structure. Um, Math Investigations, which is a, um, math support class for students who are not on IEPs. Um, there are some, um, promising results in eighth grade, the impact of that eighth grade, the student growth percentile of sixty-four compared to fifty-three point five for all students, um, but not as significant, um, in the other grades. And then we pulled, we also did the, um, student growth percentile for students who participated in the calculus project, um, and that was any level of participation, so it was, it could have been a student who just went to the summer, or went to the summer and went two days during the year. And we, we found it to be comparable for all students, um, for that, that particular group, so that was just the, the one eighth-grade group. So, some of the additional initiatives, again, the advancement budget in terms of the support for science. Um, Designing Equity by Thinking in and About Mathematics Professional Development is, um, we've, we've been partnering with EDC for the last two years now, um, and this is in, um, a very intensive professional development experience for teachers with forty hours in the summer, sixty hours over the school year, and we're now on our second school year. And the, the professional development is definitely around mathematical practices, but it's thinking about mathematic instruction from an equity perspective. Um, everything from the kinds of instructional choices teachers make, to the kinds of power imbalances that may be occurring in student conversations, in who gets called on and when, and how they get called on. Um, teachers are at a place now where they're actually videotaping themselves and analyzing their teaching for the power patterns that happen, um, around equity in the classroom. So, it, it's extremely intensive. And the, um, highest full participation, um, is among our eighth-grade math teachers. And I'll just connect that back to that previous slide that I showed you, um, about some of the highlights. Um, so, Students with Disabilities Professional Learning Community, so we, we use, um, a professional learning community structure for our school-based professional development, um, and one of them in particular focused on supporting students with disabilities in science, and we absolutely think that the, um, uh, that the data that we saw in terms of the subgroup for science in particular is absolutely linked to that, that PLC in particular. Um, there's also some star- targeted Student Progress Review, um, a process that was developed in, um, within the Science Department that is now being used both in ELA as well as History and also Math, um, where it's a fine-grained look at students who, um, might be struggling and, um, having conversations, ongoing conversations about what's in place for them. And then, um, finally, this, uh, V spoke about this, and Mr. Jet spoke about this as well, but, um, we are absolutely, um, in a, um, far better place in terms of data use, um, and really using data and having data when we need it and how we need it, um, and that has made, um, a tremendous, um, difference. So, our next steps, um, professional development specifically, um, in the area of supporting students with disabilities. Um, so, our entire Pierce leadership team is participating, um, in the foundations. It's an online, uh, professional development opportunity through DESI. Um, it's Foundations for Inclusive Practice for Administrators. So, we participate in the course with probably three hundred other administrators in the state, um, and then use the tools in the course during our Pierce leadership, um, meetings. And this next bullet, um, explicit, explicit strategic instruction and example-based learning in math. So, what the literature says, so to go back to V's question that she raised and what we saw in the data, this question about why the smooth, um, sort of improvement in ELA when you look at the gaps overtime and the, um, far from smooth improvement, um, for math, what the literature says, um, is there is, um, a large empirical, um, chunk of data that supports the idea that targeted interventions for English Language Arts specifically are highly effective and can be highly effective in a very short amount of time, a year or less. So, we see that with our reading intervention, where students can get intensive reading intervention and be done with reading intervention, um, and move forward. Um, the research base on how to close the gap for math, um, does not look like that. So, it talks more about the, the sort of substantial, um, studies that they have on how to close that gap, um, talk about full-class instruction and full-class pedagogical practices. It's not to say that math interventions don't work necessarily, but there is not a strong research base that those in particular will shift, um, that gap. And so, when we think about professional development, um, we think about it in terms of something like the Equity Project through EDC, where it's a large-scale intended to shift practice, shift what's happening for everyone in the classroom, but with the effect of closing the achievement gap. Um, continue our PLC model, um, for sharing best practices, investigate, um, new assessment scoring and data systems to decrease time devoted to scoring and sorting of data, so the actual making it all happen. We have far improved systems, um, but making that work more efficient. Um, using some statistical analysis to determine the extent to which school-based assessments predict MCAS and PARC performance. So, we just started doing that, calculating, um, I know it's late, so I'll give the brief, um, description. Um, so, calculating what's called a Pearson coefficient, um, which basically looks at to what extent, if I look at a student's SRI reading score, to what extent can that predict how they will do on the PARC? Um, and the, the sneak peek of that is it actually predicts quite perfectly. Um, so, we've also looked at our common assessment, unit assessment, um, averages, to what extent do they predict PARC performance? So, we're looking at all of our in-house assessments to see to what extent, um, they will predict performance on PARC. Um, and it's been, it's a little bit of a mixed bag at this point. Um, but what that then will tell us, um, or, or create for us, are some questions, um, to ask about the assessments that we're using and how we're using them, um, and why they might be predicting PARC or not, and even if that's a good thing, and why we think so. And then this last piece, revising the Pierce Academy structure. So, one piece that we're adding in this year for eighth graders, um, is Jenny Beliveau, who is the Adjustment Counselor both at Pierce and at the high school, um, has recruited some high school students who will, once a week, come down and work with eighth-grade, um, Pierce Academy students in a mentoring, um, kind of capacity. Um, and that's something that, that Mr. Jet, I know, has advocated for and does a lot of work around having older students mentor younger students. Um, and so, we're, we're going to do that formally. We did a couple of trial runs last year, but we're going to do it as a formal part of Pierce Academy, um, this year.
So, we are, we'll jump into our highlights. Um, I, I would say, overall, looking at our data, um, we definitely were not overly pleased with the level of achievement, but I think, um, to V's point, when we looked at the cohort, particularly keeping in mind that there is a new test, we did see that the cohorts actually stayed pretty similar across the new assessment coming into place. Um, so, we didn't necessarily see a dip, um, but we did see the level of achievement drop as we went from MCAS to PARC. Um, so, that was kind of most notable with some of our grade four students. Um, in grade three, we saw a decrease, um, in some of the CPI gaps between African-American, Black, and economically disadvantaged. Um, we also noticed in grade four as a highlight, um, as we went from MCAS to PARC, we also went from four performance levels to five. And so, Level Three was kind of that, is that middle group approaching expectations, and though they didn't make it to meeting expectations, we saw the level of students in Level Three go from fifteen percent to twenty-six percent over one year, so moving in the right direction. Um, also a big increase in the CPI between, uh, grades four and five for Title One students. Um, we're looking at that potentially due to our mentoring program. And, um, a slight increase in the ELA level proficiency for grade five students, and SGP again, yeah, the whole range. Science, uh, we definitely saw a pretty big dip. It's definitely something we're looking at, and we're looking at interventions. In previous years, we saw the percentage go up and down about seven percent. We had a big increase last year to fourteen percent, so that made our dip all the more dramatic. Um, if we took out last year's, we wouldn't get to see that thing, seven percent, but it is what it is, and we definitely, um, are working towards addressing that.
So, in looking at the data areas for improvement, I think, uh, for everyone, it's narrowing the achievement gap between subgroups as referenced from our CPI data, as well as between school and district scores, and that's a universal, uh, area for improvement. Um, in particular, our ELA performance in grades three through five overtime, through our analysis of curriculum and initiatives, um, a constant and, uh, cycle of reflection that we do and how curriculum is implemented is an ongoing process. A Tucker-focused analysis of our current grade four student performance in ELA, um, as it was not aligned to our internal data, and Dr. Spalding referenced this in her presentation, we have had a lot of conversation about our internal data and the purpose of our internal...
We have had a lot of conversation about our internal data and the purpose of our internal data, and that it is not always, or is not predictive in terms of a PARC standardized test, that the demands are very different, and sort of looking into how can we, as a team and as a district, look to find more predictive ways to assess our students. And then the grade five science performance and interventions in conjunction with targeted nonfiction literacy opportunities. We did have an extended day program last year, it was the first year. We piloted it, it was nonfiction-based, and we weren't, we didn't see necessarily evidence of a correlation that that supported the science data, but it was a one-year program. We recently got new curriculum in grade five science, which is outstanding. And so I think that will just take a little longer to see, to make any judgments in terms of that.
So targeted interventions, and I know you heard a lot about these in the earlier presentations, so I won't go over them in too much detail. But again, around the early literacy initiative, the district reading specialist, this is just a little bit of data on our students. We had twenty-six students in grades one and two participate last year. Sixty-five percent of them reached benchmark, and that's considering they were starting two or more levels below, so we really did see a great increase in that. Around closing the achievement gap and science STEM initiatives, again, we did do the extended day program for science. It is always hard in the fifth grade, where that's their first year to really be able to tell what's improvement, but, you know, we think it was a good first attempt. We're going to look at that again and look at some of the data and make a determination if we tweak it or we change it, but I think that's something we try to cross the school, so others may have some thoughts on that as well. And then again, we do have new FOST curriculum units that came in grades two, three, and five, the new STEM curriculum in grade four last year, and then the continuation of science for scientists in grade five. And then specific to Tucker, we have the Title I initiatives, and Kat, again, being our Title I director, can speak to those.
So with Title I, unlike the other elementary schools, we have some other initiatives that were afforded through our allocation with funding. So last year, we had a full-time reading specialist for grades three to five, focused intervention in those grades. In particular, sixteen students were serviced in grades three through four, and eighty-two percent reached the grade-level benchmark despite starting below benchmark. So again, really great growth and a good percentage of achievement. However, we need to continue to look into where that, that bridge is to bring it into our standardized testing and transfer those skills with task-oriented reading demands. We also have a math specialist for grades, I'm sorry, a staff member who worked with both reading and math, and then one particular staff member who worked in math for grades K through five. We have a Saturday Academy. Last year was in its second year, and it's a standards-based project learning program for, open to all grade three students for six weeks. We did two sessions of that. And we targeted third grade with the intention of looking at that being their first testing year and trying to help them be engaged for an additional day during the school week. And the Tucker Mentor Program, which Elaine referenced, in grades four and five, it goes back to what the CDM was talking about earlier with creating relationships among students that are at risk with staff members. And so we had twenty-six students participate with six staff, making groups of four to five. And that is a very successful program with close to ninety percent attendance rate multiple times during the week. And we also connect with the Pierce Middle School towards the end of the year for fifth graders, so we can bridge that gap as well. And then we have our Summer Scholars, which participates in conjunction with MSE, and that extends the school year for students in pre-K to five. So these are some of the district initiatives that will most likely be on other school slides, so I'll be brief with these. But LETEO, there's a LETEO conference for which Milton has attended two years, which is an analysis and a review of literacy, curriculum, and growth. And we've had the opportunity and privilege to attend with a leadership team to that conference. RAVO is also called World Board Detectives, is an intervention for students in grade three that happened at all four elementary schools last year, and it was targeted at students who needed significant intervention in specifically fluency and phonics. And also, a literacy coach, Martha Winneker, who provided professional development specifically last year to kindergarten teachers with a new, with some new curriculum materials, but has worked with the district for a number of years on literacy initiatives.
Okay, and again, I'm sure you'll, everyone will have these, but the standard-based report garden implementation, kindergarten last year, grades one through five this year, summer reading support at all of the schools in French and in English, grades one through four as part of MSE, the new science units. And again, we keep bringing it up, but the data-driven culture definitely, the support has really grown over these last two years. So next steps for us, enhance common planning. Again, the time with teachers, the forty-five-minute blocks have been really effective with us having the opportunity to sit down with teachers across teams. Lesson planning, setting up model lessons, looking at the data, it's really just been excellent times, and we see that that will have an impact over time, we believe. Looking at potentially some new assessments that will correlate better to the state assessments, as we're seeing our internal data does not necessarily match the external data. And also just thinking, I think, again, with V, we've been able to cut the amount of time that we maybe spend on the calculation of the data, and so thinking about how we can put our time more efficiently in towards planning from that data. Increasing opportunities for students to engage in authentic learning, particularly around technology with standards-based content. And for us particularly, we did have a cut in our Title I funding, so our positions have been cut from three full-time positions to one point five, so we have shifted our work towards grades two through five. And then just one other one I didn't have on here, but just to Mr. Donahue's point, last week, we've been talking a lot, particularly with our Harvard partnership, around courageous conversations, so trying to lay the groundwork for having difficult conversations with families about the data is one of our goals this year. So we're just starting that work, but thinking how we can do more than just send home the student report on their achievement, really sit down with families, make a plan in collaboration, and think about how that will impact kids over time.
So Elaine, did we, did we lose one and a half FTEs, or did we fund that out of the general fund?
So we lost, we did and we didn't. So we had a halftime reading specialist last year, and that was supposed to increase last year, but it never did. So last year, we had the halftime district reading specialist, and Kat was a full-time reading specialist, so we had one and a half reading specialists. And then we had one full-time math person and one person in K one that was doing half ELA, half math. So with the cut this year, the reading specialist at the district level increased from point five to one point oh. Kat decreased, now that she's in this role, to point five. So we're at the same place in terms of reading specialist, one point five. We kept our one point oh math specialist, but we lost that K one position that was halftime math and reading.
Translated, you lost point five.
I can take absolutely no credit for any of this, because nothing to do with any of it, which is why Meredith is here, to support all of this data. But I'm really proud of the way Glover students performed last year. So just to get right into it, when we look at the, our ELA scores, I tried to sort of make it visual for us at this late hour, I thought maybe we'd need the visual rather than the wordy. But in grade three, in ELA, our CPI went up seventy-three to seventy-seven percent. And more notably, when we look at our specific achievement gap in the Students with Disabilities, which is the only one that's large enough to be reportable, as V said, she had to sort of consolidate all elementary school data to be able to report out on the other subgroups. But when we look at that subgroup for Glover, we cut that achievement gap in half, almost. In fifth grade, we did cut it in half, pretty much. We went from seventy-five percent to eighty-nine percent. And fourth grade is where we're focusing. So we went down from eighty-three percent to seventy-nine percent CPI this year, and our achievement gap went up. However, when we looked at that a little bit closer, and we looked at, you know, we're comparing apples to oranges, when we actually looked at comparing the apples to the apples, and we looked at that cohort in their third grade to their fourth grade, the achievement gap did go down. So the fourth grade, when they were third graders, the achievement gap was forty-four percent. When they were fourth graders, it went down to forty-one point nine percent. So something that we're still going to be looking at, our median transitional SGP went up in all grade levels in ELA. And like I said, we decreased our achievement gaps in third and fifth in ELA. When you look at our math PARC scores, the number of students in grade three increased nine percent. The number of students in grade four achieving level four or above increased eleven percent. And we stayed level in grade five at seventy-seven percent achieving level four or above. But again, notably, one of the things we really are proud of, and we've looked at very carefully, is the fact that if you look at that grade five achievement gap, we went from a twenty-six point, twenty-six percent achievement gap to a ten point one percent achievement gap. So looking at closing those achievement gaps, we closed the achievement gap in math in all grades last year. So that was exciting for all of the teachers who've worked really hard on that. When we look at our science scores for our MCAS grade five, our Science, Technology, and Engineering, we went from sixty-one percent CPI last year to seventy-seven percent this year, which is a great amount of growth, sixteen percent growth in a year. And we cut our achievement gap in, almost in half again, for the Students with Disabilities This is just a little bit more, Tucker had the same, same magical V chart, but looking at our percent of advanced, you know, as, as Mr. Jett referred to, we're not looking to be complacent, we're looking to continue to grow our, our students who are scoring in the advanced category, which, you know, when you look at it over time, is something that we want to look at more closely, the fact that we went from thirty-four, you know, percent advanced, you know, we still aren't back to where that was five years ago. So it's something we want to continue to explore. However, the fifth grade science teachers did backflips when they saw this data because they worked really hard, considering the fact that in the previous year, we had a significant dip. So they really put a lot in place to make that come back. That, just want to circle back to that ELA data for grade four, which was the area that we went down this year. We looked at pulling apart actual subclaims of that grade four ELA, and it, and what it revealed is that informational text, which we know, informational text and nonfiction text was our area, our weakest area. Twenty-six percent of our students were reading near or below level four when reading informational text in grade four. So that's something that we're absolutely going to look at. The good news story is when we look at some of the writing, particularly in language and conventions, those scores looked really good. But, but looking at that informational text and reading of literary text is not far behind. So looking more closely at the genres that we're, we're working on. Meredith stopped me at any point if you want to. So, so what were we, what were we doing that worked? And Meredith can speak better to this than I can, but, you know, we had a, we had a reading specialist providing service in grade three, which certainly contributed to our scores in grade three increasing. We, the students who had reading specialist support had an eighty-one point eight percent CPI versus the seventy-seven percent CPI for students that did not have reading specialist support, which proves that the reading specialist was effective. Students in grades four and five didn't qualify for reading specialist services, so we couldn't calculate an SGP for those groups. We did have beyond-the-bell programming and looking at and closing those achievement gaps. Students who participated in grade three were within four percent of the average CPI in math and ELA. And students in grade five who participated in the beyond-the-bell programming were six percent above the average CPI in math. So translates into proof of effectiveness in those programs. I'm not going to go into all of this, but as Elaine already talked a lot about much of it, but we also, the teachers participated in some professional development around reading strategies, new science implemented, data-driven culture. It's all the same initiatives that were implemented across all four elementary schools. So I would anticipate that you might hear the same from Ms. Concanon and Mr. Redden as well. Next steps, so looking at common planning, looking at that structure. Meredith and I are working very closely to really streamline what we're doing in common planning time, to focus in on some of those areas that we, we notice, particularly that science, that advanced, that percentage of advanced in science. How are we growing that and getting that where it needs to be? Looking at the informational text reading in grade four, and in all grades, and how we can support that during common planning. Looking at our internal assessments, as the Tucker team said, to more accurately reflect our state assessments. Looking for opportunities to share best practices. So we're really trying to encourage teachers who are doing amazing things with math workshop and readers' workshop and all sorts of small group instruction, to, to be brave enough to share across the school and invite each other in, because we learn best from each other. Again, going back to my earlier presentation about small group and differentiated instruction, we need to really focus in on that. And look at our current reading and writing instructional programming to make sure that we are actually providing a balanced literacy program. And providing professional development and workshops for teachers and families regarding the transition to the standards-based accounting procedures that we're, we're undertaking.
The one thing that, that I, sorry, the one thing that I would add with our, before school programming this past year, we included students with disabilities, so anyone with on an IEP, that was the first time that we had done it, and I think that it had a great impact. And we also tried to be cognizant of the teachers that we paired in those programs, and making sure that they were groups that would have a good connection with the students. And that was something that we took directly from LETEO in thinking about the programming of that.
All right, good evening. So I'm going to go over the Cunningham highlights for the data. I want to start with, I have a chart on the next slide, I just want to start with some of the things I know we need to work on. The last two presentations I did, I really focused on making sure that we supported growth in the fourth grade. We had some struggles with SGP in fourth grade, and we wanted to put structures in place to support instruction, make sure we had different assessments from necessarily what the other grades were doing, and making sure that teachers were using those and creating them in some cases, and making sure that they would be integrated in sort of, we were doing better with the performance levels of fourth-grade students. And I think this next slide first recognizes that we have some performance struggles in third grade, but also recognizes that the support and the things we put in place, Amy Gill more specifically, in fourth grade has made a difference. The performance from third grade to fourth grade with that cohort has increased dramatically. The SGP sixty-seven. The SGP sixty-seven, sixty-one in part. If you look at the CPI in grade four from two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, eighty-three, eighty-nine, ninety-one. So that's another dramatic increase. The median SGP forty-three to forty, fifty-eight to sixty-seven. And then the highlight, although they don't report out on it, our African-American subgroup in ELA for fourth grade part, a hundred percent of them received either a four or a five, level four or five. Significant. And again, what we really take from this is that we really need to put similar systems in place for our third grade, for our third grade teachers, and especially knowing that it's a new team there as well. Our math, we saw similar success. Our two thousand fifteen third grade cohort increased from sixty-seven, sixty-six, sorry, sixty-six level four and five to eighty-five in fourth grade. You see a slight increase in grade four math CPI from two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen. We see a dramatic increase in grade four math and SGP from two thousand fourteen, from forty-five to fifty to seventy-four. I want to comment on the high needs group because in that time, actually, our high needs population has doubled from that time. Specifically, the students with disabilities. Our grade five, I mean, our grade five science data. Percentage, we pretty much just stayed flat, even if you look at the numbers from two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen. Talking about the change of a few students that really changed those percentages. The percentage of students in the advanced from two thousand thirteen has increased, but from two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, you see it's pretty similar. We definitely put more of an emphasis on science. I'm really encouraged by just the feedback I'm receiving from the PD and the class curriculums in general. And the teachers have definitely identified the times they're teaching science, they're receiving the support. And that's another reason why I think it's very important to be able to free up those coordinators and make sure that they're also there and providing those teachers with the necessary support and not, you know, filling in or doing different administrative duties. Because I really think the teachers are begging for it. They appreciate the commitment to the new curriculum. And now we can sort of support it through, hopefully build it from kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade, or at least support the teachers that have the curriculums currently. So again, our big focus this year is going to be really supporting the new team that's in third grade at the Cunningham School and making sure that we are identifying students that need support right away and providing opportunities for them so that we don't have this low level of performance on the third grade part this year. We are, although we have some fourth grade assessments that are a little different, we are looking at the teams that we bring in at the program. I won't say it now, just in case. I wrote a grant for it, and we've talked about it, so hopefully it gets approved. But hopefully you can put in some better predictors for our part for our third and fourth grade in the near future.
So I'll talk a little bit about the targeted interventions that we've had in place. These will read a little bit similarly for both Cunningham and Qualicott. But I'll start with Cunningham. We utilized district reading specialists last year to offer support to eighteen students in grades three through five. They met four times weekly in blocks of time up to forty minutes. Students in grades four and five in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, who received this reading support saw significant growth with a median transitional SGP of sixty-two. And three of the eight fourth graders that we serviced received SGPs over ninety, which was a really impressive statistic. We also collected some really interesting data on our beyond the bell programming. In addition to the numbers that I have listed for you here, we also collected some anecdotal data from the students who participated regularly. And although we had fifty and forty-two students participating respectively in reading and math, we saw the highest rate of attendance in grades four and five. They saw the importance of it. They felt connected to the school and to their teacher who was administering the intervention. And the anecdotal data that V was able to collect from the children themselves really indicated that they felt as though this was a worthwhile endeavor, which I think it speaks volumes. So as a result, students in grade four who participated in the beyond the bell program had a median SGP of sixty-six in both ELA and math. It's interesting, it was the same in both. And students in grade five who participated in the beyond the bell programming had a median SGP of forty-four and a median SGP of thirty-five in the math. But it's interesting, it got me thinking when Dr. Spalding was talking, that the intervention in reading really is making a difference, but the math intervention might take a little bit longer over time. So I think we can say that the interventions that we've put in place over the last two years at Cunningham and at Qualicott have really made a difference for the students. And that bears out both in the numbers and in the attitudes of the children who participated in the programs. Next slide. This slide is pretty much exactly the same as you've heard from the other elementary schools. The one thing to highlight is with the standards-based report card, we were able to roll that out in kindergarten last year. And it really served as a model for the grades one through five who are in the process of rolling out their standards-based report card as we speak. And it's really gotten teachers looking at their instruction with a much narrower lens, a finer lens, so that they are able to not only inspect what it is they do on a daily basis, but how that carries out over time. And I think the work has been really, really instrumental in a lot of the growth that we've seen with our students. Next steps. The common planning time, I think this is time that all of us feel is extremely important to look not only at, again, the data, both internally and externally that we collect, but also that the instructional practices within the classrooms. Already this year, for grade three, as a result of the common planning time, we have implemented a in-house RTI model that takes place on Fridays for grade three, where the French and English students are all combined, and they do targeted math support for those children on Fridays. And thus far, the feedback has been fantastic from both the students and the teachers. We are continuing to strengthen our inclusion practices, and that starts with our youngest students in the ICLP program, who are included for up to ninety percent of the day. We continue to share best practices, both within special education, interventions, and also with classroom teachers. We're going to continue to bolster our literacy practices. We are going to continue to take advantage of all the technology that we have at the Cunningham School, thanks to our wonderful principal, who is dedicated to ensuring that children have the right devices in their hands for the right tasks. And we're going to continue to streamline our assessments, to ensure that we're using the appropriate assessments to monitor what's happening in the classroom and then what children can display in terms of their knowledge of grade level standards. So I think that's it for Cunningham.
Plug in for the summer program is separate, it's outside, obviously, the school year. But if you look at the teachers and the growth of the students sort of going through the reading session and then doing the enrichment activity, I really think that that's part of the reason why there's so much interest and it's easier or a better opportunity for students to sort of get those numbers. And sometimes for the after-school programs, especially with the Rabel, with three times of the time, it's a little harder to have the numbers we want, especially as we try to grow into fourth grade. So I definitely encourage to continue to support the MSE program and continue to support those reading opportunities. Continue to support and grow that program and the Tucker Scholar Program. I think the model is what works and which encourages more students. You know, sometimes we have to extend the classes or open up another session. And we even brought in Rabel this year. But I think that that's definitely something that we should keep for the MSE program for whoever does it.
Just to add very quickly to that, one of the largest barriers that we saw to children participating in the summer program was transportation. So that's certainly something that I think we, as an elementary team, are committed to looking at for next summer. Many of the children that we invited to reading support over the summer were unable to attend because of transportation issues. So I think that moving forward, that's certainly a priority for us to look at.
Specifically, the transportation to a full-day program. So many of them wanted to participate but needed to get from one building back to a full-day camp.
Right.
I think that was true of students in every school. So thank you. It's almost eleven-thirty at night and I'm your last data presentation.
That's been not least, Paul.
Thank you again for having us. I know all of this is important work regardless of the time. I wanted to start by going over the ELA PRC data highlights and specifically point out that this chart is set up in a way that I'd like you to focus on the grade three column first. Because what we know is that our grade three scores for the percent of proficient and advanced is variable. So we know that our starting point isn't always consistent. However, what we do know is that our growth is consistent. As we move to grades four and five, you can see that the percentage of students in advanced and proficient grows. And the student growth percentile is typical and mostly higher than typical in all of the areas. So when I say that you see student growth percentiles like sixty-four or sixty-five in some cases, you can see that the growth of our children is higher than typical. I also want to point out that last year, our grade four students with disabilities, the gap of, the achievement gap for CPI decreased. So in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, the thirty-one achievement gap was decreased to eleven and nine tenths. So that was a definite highlight for us, specific to children with learning disabilities in ELA.
Of course, it doesn't happen for a hundred years yet.
For math, what we know is that our math growth is typical or higher in most cases. And by the time our students get to grade five, the number of proficient or advanced students ranges from seventy-three to ninety-four percent. And that number is definitely something to be proud of. And also, again, the student growth is, it's actually, it's amazing. So I think it's a definite highlight, and it speaks to the dedication to the planning of the teachers and the consistent practices. As far as science goes, we did see a little bit of a dip as far as our percentages of students in proficient or above. However, I have circled and do want to highlight that we were able to push students from proficient into advanced. So you do see that our number of advanced students increased. As Dr. Spalding pointed out, it doesn't matter. We don't get any extra credit for that, but I do think it should be noted that children were able to move last year. And I think, you know, although our number has decreased, I still think that we have a lot to be proud of and children are learning. And science from science specifically has given our children and our teachers an opportunity that they haven't had in a long time to grow professionally. And I do predict that our numbers will be back where they were, if not higher. So we definitely have areas for improvement in mathematics specifically. I'd like to provide opportunities for students to explore more visual and numeric models so that they can deepen their explanation skills and to develop stronger number sense and application, both with pencils and keyboards. Watching the way the assessments have changed over the past several years, actually, what's interesting is to do math on a keyboard. And I think that maybe we didn't always predict what children would be asked to do. So I think giving children as many opportunities as possible at a young age to experience math specifically on a device is something that we need to consider. In English Language Arts, I'd like to continue to support staff with a balanced literacy program, inclusive of varied writing opportunities, again, with pencils and keyboards. They need to build stamina with both vehicles and learn how to navigate the program. We spent a lot of time talking about Boomwriter today in our leadership meeting. And I think it's such an amazing opportunity for children to learn how to communicate through technology, skills that they'll be using for the rest of their lives. In science, I'd like to continue to support staff with transitions to the new science standards and also increase the emphasis on science practices. I'd like to have Amy talk a little bit about the targeted intervention, targeted interventions. Sorry, it is eleven-thirty at night. And I think they will sound familiar because we work together all the time. And we analyze this data as a district and as individual schools all the time. But we do really try to work as a team, and so here goes take four.
I like Holly that you brought up the team approach because in rolling out both the reading specialist and the beyond the bell staff for these programs, they're shared staff in many instances. So the reading specialists cross Cunningham and Qualicott, which is great because they know a larger body of students. And the beyond the bell teachers also, some of them were Qualicott teachers who were able to sub in for a Cunningham teacher. We had reading specialists who took groups. So it really is a team atmosphere, and I think that, you know, speaks volumes. And I'm very lucky to be flanked by these two guys who I've worked with for a very, very long time. And I think that culture is only benefiting our students, which is fantastic. So again, of the students we were able to service in grades four and five last year, four days a week, for reading specialist support, we saw SGPs that ranged from fifty-eight to eighty-one for these students, which I think was, again, we're seeing above-typical growth in many instances. For the beyond the bell programming and support, the median transitional SGP for students who were receiving reading support, it was from sixty-one to seventy-five. Again, speaking to the fact that this intervention made a difference, both in the numbers and then anecdotally with the children. And those with math support, the, yeah, it's interesting because it's a little bit different at Qualicott than it was at Cunningham, but the SGPs were between seventy-one and seventy-seven. It is important to note that the majority of the children received both math and reading support. But it was a ten-week program that ran from February break right up until testing. And again, it was sort of a really nice way to keeping children engaged in after-school activities. Many of them left our beyond the bell program and went down to after-school. And it really ensured that they had some really targeted academic help. So I was really pleased with the outcome of both of those programs. And then you'll see the familiar additional initiatives slide, which we have looked at already, which is fantastic. And the one thing that I will highlight on this is additional learning walks with staff. Last year, grade five at Qualicott piloted an internal collaborative coaching and learning model, which we had done a few years back in seventh grade at Pierce, where the teachers really choose a focus of something that they want to look at in their instruction. And then we set up a model for providing coverage in classes so that they can go in and watch one another and hone in on that focus. And this was done with the support of the reading specialist and myself. And the teachers are craving more of it, and it's gone down to fourth grades now asking to do it. So we're hoping that, again, the collaborative nature of the two buildings, we will see some of what's happening with RTI over at Cunningham spill over into Qualicott, and some of what's happening with collaborative coaching and learning over at Qualicott is spilling over into Cunningham. So I'm really pleased with a lot of the things that the teachers are doing to support the growth and achievement of all of our students at the Cunningham and Qualicott.
And the one additional next step for Qualicott specifically would be to include our preschool team in LECTEO-type professional development. We have been invited as a district to attend a new professional development opportunity offered by Noni LaSalle. And the preschool team district-wide will be attending on November seventh. So we're hoping to get as many best practices in literacy out as early as possible so we can make that third grade number jump up. Thank you. We have more next steps, but you've heard them four times.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think Ms. Concanon said it best, this is important work no matter what the time. But thank you for your patience, and this is important information, particularly as we work with the we work with the superintendent to try to assess the district's performance. And I think most importantly, thank you for your enthusiasm in presenting the data. And it's late, but that, that enthusiasm never wanes, so thank you very much.
Yeah. Can I just say something?
Sure.
I just have to say that I'm just so impressed with all that you do above and beyond everything that you have to do. All the programs, the initiatives, the, beyond the bells, the before school, the after school, the summer school, the work at the high school, the work at the middle school. I mean, it is utterly amazing what you do, and as someone who has benefited tremendously from your work as a parent, I just say thank you. I, I probably won't be able to sleep even though it's really late because my brain won't be able to shut down thinking about all this stuff, but it's truly amazing work, and we are so fortunate to have you all working on behalf of our children and the families in the town. And yeah, so just thank you so much.
Here, here.
[applause] Safely.
Because we're going to stay here till tomorrow. Diversity meeting at 4:30, and we'll be all set.
Back to your screen and lay down.
Okay. So as, so as to Ms. Varela.
Is there any way I can make a motion, especially because we have to go to executive session, that we do policy and move everything to?
I'm, I'm taking care of that.
Okay, great. What are we doing?
So I'm.
I want the warrant because I have to leave. Someone sign it.
Sorry, that's okay. My brain was still thinking about power teaching and videotaping. I'm sorry.
So I'm going to, I'm going to move most of the remaining items to next, the next meeting agenda, which is November 9th. But a few things that we need to take a position on, and we can be out of here in the next five minutes. So move to approve the annual report, which you've already seen.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Move by Walker, seconded by Donahue, Mora. Move to authorize the members attending the MAS C conference next week to take positions on behalf of the school committee and represent those positions during the discussion. Those would be members Varela, Craighead, and Walker.
Second.
Move by Walker, seconded by Bagley, Jones.
Yep. Me.
Varela.
Oh, I'm sorry. Whatever.
All in favor?
Yeah.
We're going to move the superintendent's evaluation discussion to the next meeting as with the discussion of the budget process, as with discussion of the vendor warrants, as with discussion of the first quarter report. Move to authorize the chair and the chair of the policy subcommittee to work with the superintendent to first invoke the emergency approval process for policies and to approve those policies.
Second.
Move by Walker, seconded by Bagley, Jones. All in favor? It's unanimous. And I'm going to move the executive session discussions to our next meeting.
Yes.
Sure.
Selfishly, so do you want me to take my evaluation back or am I going to go ahead?
No, we'll, we'll take the books, but you can do the discussion at the next meeting. We'll just, and then we'll have to do our work.
Mine's really self-explanatory. I don't have to say anything at the next meeting.
You probably do, but we'll talk about that. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move by Walker, seconded by Craighead, all in favor?